Board of Trustees meeting on July 24th. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So first on the agenda, we have public comment. If anybody would like to come up, you can just come up to the podium right here. And you have three minutes, just date your name. Okay, you can start the three minutes.
We'll just pass it down, it'll be faster that way.
This for everybody?
Yeah. If you pass it will...
Where is the clock starting?
Because you start, well, you're stopping public comment from starting by going to the podium. So your time has started.
Okay. I'm here today to talk about the unfair unjust treatment of public safety. Danny Ross had mentioned they would do a video presentation on this during the June 12th meeting. And it's regarding the OPEB retirement funds and the split of the funds in 2021 to 2022 financial year. At the beginning of the year, it was 12% funded, we were over 12%. At the end of the year, the public safety ended up with less than 10% and the Bloomfield Township fund ended up with around 24%. I feel that's unfair and unjust, and I would like to understand why. I've also sent an email to Rep. Fitzjord, who heads up the local municipal finance committee up in Lansing. He advised me to contact Donnie Steele regarding this issue. The information is in the GAZP disclosures, they are not online. Also during that meeting, the township mentioned that the audits were in perfect condition. And I thought, well, let me go have a look. And in the analysis portion in the March 2022 audit, it says the governmental fund contributions towards OPEB liability were 1.25 million. That's a correct statement. However, in the graph below, you have the assets and the contributions of $263,000 from water and sewer, which were not included. If I did this in my finance or accounting class, I would lose marks. But apparently here it's okay. The next page is the prior year. The prior year, they said the OPEB liabilities contributions were 2.5 million. And again, the water and sewer contributions were not included, 244,000. The information, I pulled it off the Norman reports that are online. It's consistent with, in the GAZP disclosures. And I hope this will get addressed at some point, especially with the misrepresentations or exclusions in the audit. Thank you.
And although we normally don't address public comment, Jason Tice, who is the one that will be presenting, is out of town. That's why he's not here doing it. So in August it will be done because...
So the treasurer's not doing it?
No.
Treasurer's responsible for the township investments, not Mr. Tice. 13 seconds.
He still has 13 seconds, I thought he was done. Okay, so he's over. So Jason Tice, who is the one who runs our finance department, which obviously covers all of this, is going to be the one who comes. And the unions are excited for this because all the police and the fire, they are also excited for this, to be able to present this. Because the fact is, we have gotten the best audits we've ever had because we are following all the rules and we've been able to give more to OPEB, even more than the state is requiring, which is why you'll see some extras. So as, as mentioned, misinformation is really dangerous. And so a voice who's giving misinformation can be really dangerous, especially when it's somebody without the background to behave, to actually respond to this. So we are not experts, the person speaking is not an expert. We're getting experts to actually come and address this, to explain how we're getting these amazing audits, how everything is so stable when one voice is trying to say something else. So although I normally never respond to public comment, when they actually make threats against public safety, that's a problem and we all stand up for that. So there will be, it will be in August. I will double check with Jason Tice, but you will see it on an August meeting. So I, I wanted to address that so we can end any more of these ambiguous discussions. Is there anyone else here for public comment?
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
My name's Cassius Drake, I am a Franklin resident. This is my wife, Jacqueline. We're here to speak in support of the Bloomfield Community Television, which as you know, provides through contract with Birmingham Cable Board, provides municipal access and, and government programming to Beverly Hills, Birmingham, Franklin. A couple of months ago, my wife and I had the opportunity to be on a show on the television channel. My wife and I own a mental health clinic in Franklin where we do some very cutting edge work, had the opportunity to speak about our work. And that was a good opportunity for us. And it was, that led to us having our own show on, on the cable TV. Something we'd always wanted to have the opportunity to have. And part of the contract is citizens in the area can also apply and have their own shows. And if they have something that they want to share with the community or the larger community at large, they can do so. It's a very professional organization. It has a modern studio where you can film your show. You have support, director, and all the support that you need to get your message out. We feel it's a wonderful contribution to the community and it has our full support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to hear.
Good evening, I'm Pam Hanson. I'm a council member in Franklin. I'm here to add my voice to support Bloomfield Cable Television and your new director, who's doing in my view a stellar job. One thing I wanted to let you know about was something Carrie and her team took on for us. As you know, we meet once, you may not know, we meet once a month. But Birmingham, of course, has the live broadcast, which means we don't. And, and it's always been a little bit of a problem. Our residents can look at the, could in the past, look at the council meetings a few days later, once the videos were posted. Now, what you helped us with, or what Carrie's team helped us with, was to stream our meetings. The quality of the audio and the video is better. People can go on the website, click, they're in the meeting, and they're set up on Vimeo the following day. And it's just, it's a huge improvement. I wanted you to know about that. It's a very small thing, but it meant a lot to us. And I'd also like to add to Cassius's comments. I've, I've been in your studio area and my, my sense is that it's, it's a working, professional, well-laid-out facility and, and I was really happy to be here. And we're looking forward to doing more with Bloomfield Cable Television. So thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead and start with the approval of the board minutes. We've all had a chance to look them over. If there are any other suggestions or changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Burnett.
Support.
Support by Trustee Showstack, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next, we have the Michigan Legislative Update from Donnie.
Close session.
Oh, sorry, my, my fault. So we also have another set of minutes. We have our closed session minutes from July 10th. And we all had a chance to look those over. I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Move by Trustee Murray.
Support.
Support by Treasurer Keeps, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we have Representative Donnie Steele here with us today from the 54th House District to give us a legislative update.
Thank you, Board of Trustees. Thank you for allowing me to speak for just a couple of minutes. I probably will not go over three minutes. So I'm Donnie Steele, State legislator for District 54, which includes half of Bloomfield Township, all of City of Bloomfield Hills, half of Auburn Hills, a portion of Oakland Township, and all of Orion Township. So I'm here tonight just to learn more about what's going on in Bloomfield. Right now, we are on summer break, so we won't be in Lansing until September. So I'll be here in the district for July and August. And I do have a sign-up sheet if you would like just kind of updates from Lansing about some of the laws that have passed. And I would just, just email them to you. And then if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to my office. And I have a couple of cards. So really, anybody in the room that is a resident of that area, please feel free to reach out to me. So I just really quickly wanted to go over what transpired before we left Lansing at the end of June. We passed a budget of $82 billion, which was a, I believe, a record budget for the state of Michigan. And just some of the highlights that went into it. We had the schools, which were 30, I'm sorry, 25 billion, and the Health and Human Services, which were 25 billion, which both of those departments went up close to $2 billion each. It increased our funding for per pupil of $9,500, which is higher than it has been in the past. And just a couple of things around the area that I thought would be worth mentioning. In Orion, around the General Motors plant, there was some funding for the road, which is really terrible. I know you, you probably don't drive on it a regular basis, but there's a huge influx of MEDC funding for expanding General Motors to an electric motor vehicle facility being, they're being built there. They're adding close to, I want to say how many square feet, but it is close to $6 billion. And the road around there was horrendous. And the state has funded an additional $10 million, the Congress $10 million, and Road Commission $5 for a $25 million project. So I'm really, that's the happiest part for me for the whole budget. There was a $3 million increase for the zoo. There is, was a $15 million Bloomfield Hills safety, which went to the Jewish Federation over in Bloomfield Hills for safety. Pontiac received $50 million, and that is to rehab a couple of buildings. Probably, it's a $114 or $120 million project. They want to rehab a couple of buildings to make a satellite office for Oakland County in downtown Pontiac. And the state provided a $50 million portion for that rehab in, for Pontiac. The zoo, I already said about the zoo. And I just want to say, the, the building for Henry Ford got $2 million, I'm sorry, $4 million for the roof, and the Holocaust Museum got $2 million. So a lot of spending here and there, and here and there. Personally, being that I'm on the transportation budget, I would have liked to see more funding in the transportation, into Public Act 51, which would have filtered down to all our road commissions. And we received zero extra funding for our $6 billion transportation budget. And the Road Commission said that they needed about $2 or $3 billion to actually keep our roads up at an 80% starting next year. So not having any further funding, that is what I had advocated, close to at least a billion dollars for extra funding, and we did not receive any. So some of these hit or miss portions of the budget, I would have liked to have seen funneled at the top and done for the whole state infrastructure versus, I would call them pet projects. So that is just a quick overview. The aggregate mining, I know it doesn't affect Bloomfield, but that has been pulled off the table. Revenue sharing was increased slightly. And they are trying to do a trust fund where they put the funding for the revenue sharing for the local governments in a specific fund. And so it won't be, should we give them more or should we not give them more? That it would be on a regular basis that's set up for over a period of time. So that is something that is being worked on. But this year, there should be an increase in the revenue sharing. And I did want to say that prevailing wage was repealed, right-to-work was repealed. And there was some expansion of the Elliott Larson as well for the LBGQT. So that is my quick update. There's a lot of updates for Proposition 2, which has to do with the voting. Martin spoke a little bit that he's ready, so it's always good. Some of the smaller communities might not be so lucky. I know Orion's doing pretty good and Auburn Hills is doing well, too. So I do have office hours coming up in Auburn Hills, at the Auburn Hills Library between 6:00 and 7:00. I do try to go office hours from community to community. I was in Bloomfield Hills, the city of Bloomfield Hills, last month. So that is my quick update. And if anybody would like my business card, I will leave them at the back in a sign-in sheet, if that's okay with you, Supervisor.
And does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to say kudos to you on the introduction of your mental health bill. I was very happy to see that and appreciate your work on that behalf.
Thanks, Stephanie, I mean trustee.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you know if there's any movement on the short-term rentals?
It's flat for right now.
It will, it's, has not disappeared. So I do know Orion is trying to be, get behind, get ahead of it, so...
Well, we have an ordinance.
You do.
We've had one for four years.
Okay.
The threat is, they don't care that local control and, and we'd end up like the other tourists where 40 or 50% of our houses are owned by non-residents. They would be owned by companies for Airbnb's. So we protected ourselves four years ago and it's been wonderful. And there's nothing below 30 days.
Nice.
But if that law passed, our ordinance would no longer exist.
There has been some very bipartisan meetings with MML and a collective group of people trying to come up with something that's palatable, palatable for the townships and the cities, of course, too.
Awesome.
So we're, yes, we're working, not in anything specifically, but to at least be cohesive so we can take everybody's consideration in mind, so.
Well, if you ever need to know our vote, our vote four years ago was no, short-term rental below 30 days.
Yeah. Yeah. And the Lake communities, I think, have a lot of disruption to their communities as well. And, and you want your communities to be a part of your communities. You want them to be trustees and planning commission members and work on, you work at the library. And so by having people here full-time, they participate in the community and that's what we need to have a community, so.
You want a neighbor in the house next to you, not a hotel.
Yeah, not people coming and going, not knowing who's...
Every three days, somebody else in the house, so.
I did, I did personally live through that, it, it was not fun, so, yeah.
Great, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And feel free to put those on the back there.
So Supervisor, I would like to make a motion to amend tonight's agenda to include an additional item for us to revisit the FLOCK camera installation.
Revisit and, do you want to explain?
Yes. So basically, I was initially in support of it and after the fact, my vote did not sit well with me. So I'd like to see if we can reconsider and I can change my vote.
Okay. We have a motion by trustee Vicki. Do we have any support?
No support.
Support by Clerk Brook. And I'll, we'll take a vote on it, do we need roll call?
I don't think so.
Do we need a discussion to add it, or can we just vote?
Is there any, well...
Is there any, this is just to add it to have a discussion, yeah.
Yes, yes.
So...
I guess I'd like to make a point. I mean, without knowing really what the comments are, I think it might make sense maybe to have the police here to be able to respond and be part of the conversation. So maybe to put this on next meeting's agenda so that there's an ability to have communication with the entity that, you know, with our police.
And procedurally, the reconsideration motion would have to happen tonight. In, if that motion passes, then the matter's back before the board and you could schedule it for next month, so.
So this is to put it on the agenda and discuss about a reconsideration?
Motion for reconsideration.
I think the motion was made to reconsider.
Right, but not to actually vote tonight, just vote on to reconsider it?
Whether to reconsider or not, yes.
Well, I think what you say is vote to add it to tonight's agenda. And then when it's on the agenda, you can add it to the bottom of the agenda. And then when we get to it, we can vote to table it, right?
No, I...
Well, I think the motion was made to reconsider.
I know if, if we vote yes to reconsider and then it gets on the agenda, it doesn't have to be next, it could be somewhere else on the agenda.
Or it could be at the next meeting, yes, that's correct.
Trustee Vicki, would you be willing to wait till the next meeting?
Yeah.
You could just put it on there.
That's fine by me. So should I make that?
There still needs to be a vote on the motion to reconsider to do that, though.
You can't withdraw a motion.
What, reconsideration has to happen at the same meeting where the motion was originally made or at the next meeting. This is the next meeting, so this is the last time.
Oh, so she has to put it on the table, okay.
The reconsideration motion has to be now. If it is voted to reconsider it, you don't need to do that tonight. You could do it later in the meeting, you could do it the next meeting.
Okay. So a motion by trustee Vicki, support by Clerk Brook. Do we have, are you okay with, okay? So without a roll call vote needed, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we'll put it at the end of the agenda?
Or...
Or just do it now and table it.
You could table it right now.
Okay, so a motion to table to the next meeting?
So moved.
Support.
With my Treasurer Keeps, support by trustee Showstack, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you all for working together on that one.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have Considered to Approve Fireworks Display for the Birmingham Country Club on August 5th, presented by Fire Marshal Pete LaHose.
Good evening, Board, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, thanks.
Good. Here today to talk about Birmingham Country Club. They have proposed a fireworks display for their SixA event, which is a suburban inter-club swim association, on August 5th at around 10:00 PM. There is no rain date for this event. If it doesn't happen, the, the event is over. I conducted the inspection on July 12th, 2023. And according to all the information that was supplied to me by the applicant, everything seems to be suitable. Birmingham Country Club also had a fireworks event earlier this year over the holiday. This is going to be a much smaller event, looking at what they're proposing. So it's my opinion, recommendation that, you know, if you approve it, to, to let it go through.
Do you have any questions? Would this be some, oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to ask, do you, I, I, having really no understanding about how long 500 fireworks would take, do we have any sense of how long, if it starts at 10, when it's going to end?
I, I don't know how long it takes for them to go. It's all automatic, it's all professionally done. It's all electronic and choreographed by them. I'm not really sure how long 500 would be. I could call and ask that question. It is a smaller event, there's smaller shells. And I'm not sure what type of, you know, finale or anything they're going to have with it. But it's a smaller scale than a usual event that they, they've done in the past.
Worried about the same concerns that I've been, so we've been getting concerns about locking down, having a tighter ordinance on fireworks, shorter time, smaller fireworks, things like that. So that's why I just asked him, I said, isn't that outside of the normal state allowed fireworks dates?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Just our option to allow it or not allow it.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm concerned, too. I mean, it's, it's just the more we have of these in the community, you know, the more it disrupts the function of, of the neighborhoods and homes and...
We get a lot of complaints.
Folks that live, live around there. You know, so I'm concerned about having just fireworks on so, so many days.
Do you know if the neighborhood, the neighbors have been informed or Birmingham Country Club's going to inform them if this is approved?
Generally, they, anytime there's a fireworks display, the, the neighborhood has been informed for it. Yeah. I, I would assume it'd be the same in this situation. I haven't talked to them about that, but I know what their July one that they did, the one that they had just last month, or June, late June.
I think that's a concern is whenever it's within that week, like the state rules are within the week of July 4th, within the week of Memorial Day, Labor Day, people are used to, it's whenever it's outside of it, we get complaints. Like at the last meeting, somebody came and showed all the debris all over her yard and everything. So it's, it's gotten so big and so long that it was really smart to ask the question of how long? Because some went an hour and a half, like not 10 minutes, not 50, like, you know, it's, it's the give a mouse a cookie kind of thing.
Yeah.
Did they not apply for one already? There's, this is not a reschedule?
No, this is not a reschedule.
This is a specific event, a second one.
This is not a 4th of July event.
No, no, it's a specific event. It's an annual event that switches between, like last year it was at BAC, wasn't it?
Yeah, there's like six different clubs that rotates through.
It's a swim event that changes country clubs every year.
What's the event?
But it's, it's a swim, inner-city or inner...
Inter-club.
Swim Association.
So all the country clubs.
Well, part of my concern is just this year with the weather, our, you know, the dates have been changed and changed and changed. And it's just kind of spread fireworks out for the whole month of July almost. And then now to go into August, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, resident disruption.
Typically with, when we have a, you know, consumer fireworks is what the law, the state law allows to be the day before, the day after, the day of the event, certain times and things like that. With the display ones, it's, it's strictly up to, you know, the township and the board to decide whether or not they want to approve something like that. Because it isn't, it isn't a, it isn't a normal public person doing it, like myself. It's a professional display that they're licensed. They have, you know, their, their federal license for doing pyrotechnics and things like that. So it's a little bit different when you talk about categories. It's bigger, it's bigger, it's safer. You know, they have to follow rules where some people don't when they do it, you know, at their own home. So this is a, we, we don't get very many of them. We generally, it's just the country clubs that have asked for it over the years. We have had some residents ask for display fireworks that we've denied in the past just because of proximity and things like that. But looking at this particular event and where it's at, there's, there's ample room for, for them to do. And they have done similar things in the past, so.
So do you recall the last time they hosted the inter-club swim meet? Did they have a fireworks display that time?
I don't remember them doing it here at Birmingham last time. They did have a swim meet last, a couple of years ago that they did request it and it did go through.
Well, the swim meet, there was one last year also here because it was parking at Marion and...
They're actually, I think, different club groups.
And the difference is, oh, BAC is a much smaller piece of property, whereas Birmingham Country Club is a huge space where they can be away from the homes as opposed to, you know, being right on top of them with the, with the BAC.
And BAC did not have fireworks.
Right.
Yeah. This is over the golf course is the difference.
This one, you only have the noise, not the debris issue. Because that debris was pretty thick on the woman who came the other day.
Yeah. But that wasn't professionally done either. It was consumer fireworks, yeah.
This is our only chance. I mean, there's no other board meeting before this event ends on the 5th. So it's our only chance to look at it, just to make that point. And I, do you know if they've, I mean, I don't think, I don't think about this. I'm concerned that they've entered a contract, they've already purchased the fireworks. Do you have any idea with regard to that? Is there anybody here from the Birmingham Country Club to speak about it?
I don't know if they purchased it or not. I know we've had other ones that were delayed due to the air quality, some other ones. And they, they hadn't set them up yet, so they were able to reuse them. I don't, I don't know if, if Birmingham Country Club has the same situation for this. There's nobody here to, to, to ask that question, unfortunately.
Do we have the ability to approve it subject to a time limit?
As far as...
That would help a lot.
Like, we don't know how much 500 shells, how long that would take. But if we say, we'll give you 20 minutes, how many you can fire in 20 minutes, go for it?
That would help a lot.
I, I guess I would just suggest not even 20 minutes, but just a time limit like 10:15 or 10 something. Because the reality is, I think at that time of year, the sun's kind of going down now at 9:30, so...
Right.
Well, I guess basically it's 9:30. Because it's, right now is when this is happening.
And there isn't a, they say around dusk, so, you know, like if, if the sun is going to be down earlier, they may shoot off a few minutes early and be done earlier. We typically, from the fire department, we typically don't attend those events. We do the inspection prior to, and, and at that point, we leave it to them and their liability and to oversee the event as the professionals.
There's enough of us that live near there that we'd know if it's still going on. Our neighbors would be knocking on our door. So would you be thinking two different times, like 20 minutes, but not to exceed this time of night? Is that what you're thinking?
I think it makes sense, like what Treasurer Keeps is saying, put, you know, until 10:30, no, or 10:15, no later than 10:15.
But what about the possibility of the last person going like an hour?
I mean, I doubt it's a one-hour fireworks show.
Joint fireworks are only 20 minutes.
That's an example.
20 to 25 minutes is very, very typical.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I mean, like typically, like, yeah, it's, it's under a certain amount.
I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve it, but if you want to include a time, I'm open to that. But I will make a motion to approve the display.
And if I could support that with the amendment of having it no longer than 20 minutes and having it completed by 10:30 PM.
Yes, I, yes, I support that.
Okay?
Yep.
Second by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's six to one.
Thank you. Good night.
I think we do have to work on that. Okay. Next, we have Considering Approval of Franklin Woods Final Plot, presented by Angela Heisinger. Angie, are you going to be doing them separately or, and then you want questions or do you want to do them together?[1781.04]
I'll do Franklin Woods separate of Bloomfield Mill, just because there's subtle differences between the two.
Perfect.
I apologize, it will be lengthy with not very many pictures, so just bear with me.
Okay.
So I am bringing the final plats for both Franklin Woods and Bloomfield Mill before the board tonight. Both of these developments are located across the street from one another, off of Franklin Road, just north of 14 Mile Road. The first final plat I'm bringing to the board for consideration of approval is Franklin Woods. This is proposed on a 10 acre lot located on the east side of Franklin Road. The proposed plat will consist of nine single family residential lots, as well as a proposed forest park on the most northern end of the property that also encompasses an existing township regulated wetland. This is just a screenshot of sheet one of the proposed final plat for Franklin Woods. It does identify the proposed forest park being encased in a private easement for woodland and wetland conservation, as well as lots eight and nine and the respective platted easements that encompass the public and private utilities constructed as part of this development. Sheet two of the final plat identifies the proposed lots four, five, six, and seven, again, as well as the respective platted easements. And sheet three identifies lots one, two, and three. Before I go into a more in-depth review of the final plat for Franklin Woods, I did just want to give a brief overview of the plat approval and township approval timelines because the plat process has spanned over a couple of years at this point. So in the very beginning, the tentative preliminary plat was approved by the township board on November 9th, 2020. From that date, the developer had one year to submit the final preliminary plat. The final preliminary plat was approved by the board on January 10th, 2022. That approval is good for a period of two years. The final plat was submitted within that two-year period and approved by the board, or I'm sorry, was submitted on July 12th and recommended for approval to the township board on July 19th and is being considered for approval at tonight's July 24th board meeting. Correspondingly, throughout this whole process, there was also additional approvals granted by the township boards, as well as the Township Engineering Environmental Services Department. We did approve the engineering plans for this development back on November 22nd of 2022. Approval of a variance from the tree preservation and protection ordinance was approved by the ZBA back on September 13th, 2022. And the Board of Trustees did approve a waiver from the requirement for a sidewalk as part of the plat back on October 24th, 2022. Each of these approvals were approved with conditions. I am gonna go over these conditions just as an overview later on in the presentation. But moving forward, I'm gonna dive directly into the review of the final plat for Franklin Woods. So the final plat was reviewed for under section 18-110 and 111 of the Bloomfield Township's land division and subdivision ordinance. It was found through the review of this plat that all requirements had been satisfied in the township subdivision ordinance. That included confirming that the final plat does, is substantially in conformance with the final preliminary plat. The developer did successfully submit a copy of the title insurance policy, one true copy of the final plat. He did submit all of the required review, recording, and filing fees. We did review to ensure that the final plat is in compliance with the approved preliminary plat and the final plat was brought before the board within the 20-day timeframe. The final plat was also reviewed for under sections 560.131 through 560.198 of the Michigan Land Division Act. It was determined that all final plat requirements have been satisfied in the Michigan Land Division Act, subject to the below conditions still being acquired. The first one being section 560.149, which requires that prior to recording of the final plat, the county plat board does still need to certify the final plat that is before you tonight. Additionally, section 560.192B stormwater drainage requirements states that if adequate stormwater facilities are not installed before approval of the final plat, an agreement is required between the developer and the township, as well as a deposit in an amount sufficient for the faithful performance of the agreement. The engineering plans were approved for the installation of nine infiltration basins, one for each of the proposed single family residential homes. To date, only one of those nine infiltration basins have been installed. And since the final plat is coming before the board for township approval, prior to those other infiltration basins being installed, there does need to be an agreement between the developer and the township. Agreement was drafted, it was looked over by our legal counsel and approved. A copy of that signed agreement by the developer was included in the board packet. Should the board approve the final plat for Franklin Woods, the, in order to satisfy this condition of the Michigan Land Division Act, the township supervisor would also need to sign that agreement. And then the developer has five days from the date of approval of the final plat to provide the deposit that's required to cover the construction of those remaining eight infiltration basins within the five day, within five days of approval. So in a nutshell, that's really the approval requirements for a final plat. But as I mentioned earlier, there were previous conditions that were tied to other township approvals throughout this plat process. Those conditions came from approval of the final preliminary plat, approval of the engineering plans, approval of a variance from a tree preservation and protection ordinance, and approval of a sidewalk waiver from the township's subdivision ordinance. So I just want to emphasize that any approval of the final plat that the township board makes tonight would have those conditions tied to that approval that have still not been yet, been met to date. So starting with the conditions that were tied to the approval of the final preliminary plat, the first one being that there was further discussion requested by the Board of Trustees on the necessity for a safety path to be associated with the frontage along Franklin Road. The Board of Trustees meeting was held on October 24th, 2022 to discuss the necessity of the safety path, and it was approved to waive the requirement for a safety path. The motion passed six to one. Additionally, there was a condition for deed restrictions to include the preservation and conservation of the proposed forest park. The final plat does place forest park in a platted easement for woodland and wetland conservation. Additionally, the draft declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which there's a copy of that declaration in the board meeting minutes, assures that Franklin Park will be protected and conserved in perpetuity. And that is found in section 2.04 of that agreement. Moving on to the conditions associated with the engineering plan approval. The first one was the condition for the remediation of the contaminated soils on site. I think everyone's familiar with the fact that this site used to be an orchard site and the trees were treated with an arsenic-led pesticide application. I know the process for removal of the contaminated soils was heavily discussed at time of consideration for the final preliminary plat. So I'm not gonna go into too much detail on that, but rather just give an update of how the contaminated soils have been remediated from that point to now. So the remediation work was completed between December 19th, 2022 and February 14th of 2023. The removal was done by the underground contractor Solei Construction in accordance with the response action plan that was developed by McDowell and Associates and approved by the township. Staff from McDowell was on site to collect samples for chemical testing and guide the remediation work that took place. The remedial excavation depths ranged from six to 12 inches throughout the site. A response activity documentation report was submitted that detailed the results of the final confirmatory chemical testing, showing that the arsenic and lead levels were below the background level for Eagle generic residential criteria. The resultant excavations meet the Eagle criteria for unrestricted residential use. Therefore, no restricted use of the land is mentioned in any deed restrictions. Additional conditions that were tied to engineering plan approval were the shared driveways. It was the desire of some of the trustees on the board to minimize the number of drive approaches cut into Franklin Road in order for this development to move forward. So there is a single driveway approach to serve lot one. However, the remaining lots two through nine are accessed through shared driveway approaches. This concept was approved by the Road Commission for Oakland County, conditioned on right-of-way permits from their office being obtained as each lot is developed. Another condition of engineering plan approval was the execution of a bill of sale for the public water main and sanitary sewer that was installed as part of this development. At this time, both of the utilities have been installed and a bill of sale will be required to pound township acceptance of the system. And what the bill of sale does is turn over ownership and maintenance responsibilities of those utilities to the township. There's gonna be additional language that allows the township to access these private platted easements in order to perform the maintenance and repair and replacement responsibilities that the township has. Additional conditions include deed restrictions for the storm sewer system. Section 5.18 of the draft CCRs state that no structures, landscaping, or other materials are allowed to be placed in any easement which may damage or interfere with the installation or maintenance of the facilities. In addition, the execution of a stormwater maintenance operation and, or stormwater management operation and maintenance agreement is required as a condition of final plat approval and was required as a condition of engineering plan approval by the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office. That agreement was executed and recorded on April 6th, 2022. However, it will need to be amended at the end of the project to reflect the as-built conditions of the infiltration basins and the storm sewer systems as those locations have changed since the stormwater agreement was recorded. All right, getting out of the conditions for engineering plan approval and moving towards the conditions required for the approval of the variance from the tree preservation and protection ordinance from the zoning board of appeals. The developer sought relief from the tree ordinance for minimizing the required number of tree replacement inches on this property due to the unique features that are present on this property that are not present on the majority of the properties throughout the township. That unique feature was the presence of the contaminated soils on site. The township, the developer had to remove more trees than was necessary to develop the area in order to perform the remediation efforts for the contaminated soils. So he was seeking relief from having to replace 100% of the trees that were taken down in order to do the soil remediation. So the ZBA approved that condition on replacing 45% of the trees that are to be removed from the property with 1,285.5 inches of new trees. To date, about 50% of the required tree replacement inches have been planted. They've been planted mostly along the east and southerly property lines for that parcel in its entirety. The applicant still needs to plant the remaining 50%. In addition, the deed restrictions also require that each lot owner plant an additional 15 inches of trees. The, this, or section 5.13 of the draft CCRs addresses this requirement. And then furthermore, there's a two-year warranty on the replacement trees that are planted. The warranty is covered under section 2.01B of the draft CCRs. And it goes on further to state that the warranty does not go into effect until the date that the final plat is recorded. Lastly, there was conditions tied to the Board of Trustees' approval of the sidewalk waiver. The developer sought relief from the need to install a safety path as part of the plat development. Per the township subdivision ordinance, there is a requirement that any road that is part of a plat have a sidewalk or safety path adjacent to it. The developer made the argument that there's already safety path existing on the west side of Franklin Road. And also that as it stands, the township's master plan for safety path does not identify a route for safety path on the east side of Franklin Road in this area. And additionally, if you were to install a safety path per the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, it doesn't provide any continuity with existing paths on the north or south ends of this development. So for all those reasons, the board decided to approve the waiver of the sidewalk, conditioned on an additional 116 inches of tree replacement and a quantity of dense shrubs being planted. In order to satisfy this requirement, the developer still needs to submit an updated landscape plan as part of the tree permit to the planning, building, and ordinance department, identifying the additional trees to be planted. And those trees are to be planted as soon as reasonably possible. So based on the documents provided in the board packet and consideration towards compliance with the stated conditions as presented, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees consider one of the two following actions. The board shall either grant approval of the final plat upon finding that all conditions have been met and certify the township's approval, showing the date of approval on the final plat. If approved, a copy of the approved final plat shall be forwarded to the township clerk, the planning commission, and the building department. And the clerk shall record these proceedings in the minutes for this meeting and send a copy of the final plat to the county plat board. Or the board shall reject the final plat for not meeting all the conditions required for approval of the final plat. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have. Do you have any questions?
My questions are more for the developer.
Okay.
Do you wanna?
Come on, Jerry.
Come on.
Thank you for being here, though. No, actually, my questions deal with some of the, the conditions that have not been met, yeah. So, and it was quite a lengthy discussion about the planting of trees at the previous board meetings. So what are your plans for the additional 50% or so of trees that need to be planted?
So the rest of the trees are along primarily the front property line. And in order to get those trees planted, we need to have Edison come in and do their franchise utilities along with Comcast and ATT. And then we also need to get the driveway approaches in because if I plant now, can't put the driveway approaches in. I can't get permits to put driveway approaches in from the county until it's plotted and recorded into lots and I have Sidwell numbers. So, you know, it's one of those cart before the horse type things. But we will be planting the remainder of the trees that are required, including the 116 from the sidewalk installation prior to probably before fall of this year.
Oh, okay, so certainly prior to the, the construction of the homes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question has to do with, when will you be submitting a landscape plan to, for the township?
Yeah, now that we have the back planted and Great Oaks, who's our landscaper, who has done a really nice job and has provided some nice, very nice trees, may not be exactly per the plan, so he's doing what we've done in other developments. So he's doing an as-built on all the stuff in the back and then we would put together the plan for the front and then probably have to come back and as-built the front. But that will be submitted shortly.
Okay, cause certainly when I speak to residents, the two questions about the development, of course, when is it gonna be completed? But along with that, most importantly to them, landscaping is very important as it is to every member of the board, as you know, from our previous discussions. And then just one more, as far as timeline, what are your expectations on, when will you be starting the construction of the homes?
We're ready to go in for permit on the two homes on this side of the road and two on the other, both of the lots on the other side. And again, until the plat's recorded, building department doesn't like to do much unless they're bored someday and wanna look at plans for permit. But they're generally not, they're generally pretty busy. But we should be going in for permit as soon as we get the Sidwell numbers, which I think from, to go, it has to go from here to the county plat board. Plat board has 15 days. Then it has to go to the, the plat board forwards it to the state of Michigan. They have 15 days. They have 15 days. They've already pre-reviewed these plats at the state level, so we don't expect to see any requests for changes from them. And then they send them back, excuse me, to the register of deeds. So I expect anywhere from two weeks at the shortest to five weeks or so more even after this date to get the final recordings, and then the assessor can issue Sidwell numbers, et cetera. So we're trying to move it ahead as fast as we can.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm sure you remember, we talked about the remediation of the soil being an issue and that you were going to go down, I believe, up to 18 inches. And it sounds like you only felt the need to go six to 12. But then if you took that much dirt away, then you had to have brought in filled clean fill of some sort.
Yeah, we've brought in some fill, not a lot because the homes themselves will generate a lot of excess soil from the basement.
Digging the basement.
And the infiltration basin construction will generate excess soil.
So will the soil get retested again at some point to make sure? Because when you dig the basement and I don't know what the protocol is. Does it get retested again because it had been an issue?
Normally, when we've moved soil in the township, we ask the the companies that are doing the trucking to verify the soil that we're not bringing in contaminated soil. Like, our soil all went to landfills, and that we have the bills of lading to prove that. But we have no reason to suspect that any of the soils we received are other than clean. And that's that's the typical practice within the industry.
Angela, is that is that pretty typical that it would not be retested? Because I did some reading on like another area that had had the fruit trees and the contamination and that sometimes, you know, digging it up is creates other issues or creates, you know, new contamination levels.
No, the whole the whole point of the process we went through with the gridding off the whole property into these, we call them decision units, was to have a scientifically designed test. And they would, it's like Moe's surgery. They take off six inches of soil, then they sample what's left. If it passes, we're done. In our case, most of it passed within the first or second cut. And once it's done, it's it's done. There's and we did it all before there was any real opportunity. You know, we didn't dig sewers or water or do anything to mix soil until we had all the contamination certified as being out. Only then did we put sewer.
And then I guess my other question is probably for Angela, that that item to that there isn't the final plat approval, so then there has to be a substantial deposit by the builder. Is that, I mean, I know what he's saying, the cart before the horse, you got to get things rolling. But is that fairly common that we agree to that, the cash deposit, instead of having like more of the infiltration stations constructed?
So per that section of the Michigan Land Division Act, it gives him the ability to make a deposit because he is asking for final plat approval prior to those infiltration basins going in. I think the idea of delaying the installation of those infiltration basins is so that way they can be sized appropriately for whatever type of home or size of home is going to be developed on the light kind of or on the site, kind of like a septic system. You don't really know what size tank and field you need until you know the layout of the home and how many bedrooms you're going to have. So that was kind of the thought process for for that. So he opted to go with the agreement and deposit in order to get approval of the final plat at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the one we did put on lot one was done because it served two purposes. One was to accept drainage from the rear of the site that goes down a steep hill towards my neighbors on the south and east property lines. And two, as long as we were doing it, we oversized it enough that we're pretty comfortable. It will serve the house that we're building. But if it won't, we may have to put in a supplementary one or something. But the good news in that area is, I hope none of you have had calls from any of my neighbors. I've only had kudos from them in terms of how it looks back there because it's all landscaped. We sodded it to keep dirt from going down the hill. And we're starting to cut the grass. It looks like a park back there. It's beautiful. And so far, everybody loves it.
Any more?
So Terry, I just want to, you know, first of all, obviously, in any development like that, it's pretty jarring to drive by and see all the trees gone and see the lights along Franklin. But as soon, I think, as you could, you landscaped really heavily along that border. And I know, not necessarily just the neighbors that are there, but everyone around the general area really appreciated how quickly you did landscape that. And I would just echo trustee Burnett's comments that as soon as you can plant those along Franklin Road, I think just the better it's going to be for kind of the peace in the general area. Because again, it's always disruptive when trees are removed, and we all get that. But as soon as they can be replaced, I think the better.
Well, yeah, hopefully, you can authorize the sedenture and clerk Brooke and get the plat off to the to the plat board. And I have some friends in the, you know, I may try and get it out of the plat board to the state and back so we can get those Sidwell numbers from the assessor. And then I can put in the pavement for the driveways, and that will allow me to get the trees going in the front.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just got two questions. So with regard to the deed, that the restriction that says that each homeowner has to do 15 inches of trees, who enforces that?
So the deed restrictions are enforced by the homeowners association.
Okay, and you intend to enforce that if?
We do, yes.
And my last question is, will, and I think we may have touched on this before, but I don't recall the answer. If the prospective buyers, will they be put on notice that this soil had arsenic in it?
No, they don't have to. That's what Angela's presentation. That it was remediated to below Eagle standards.
Yeah, well, you know, my my memory is long enough to remember that Eagle used to have a different name. And sadly, I I don't know that I can, you know, trust their their values. But anyway, thank you.
We're trusting McDowell, not Eagle.
Yeah.
No, Eagle really has nothing, has had really no interaction in this. It's been the township and HRC had a separate consulting engineer that is more versed in this type of work. And they worked with McDowell to make sure the standards were correct and and good. And then it was McDowell certified, does the certification. There really is, you know, Eagle only sets that standard of what's residential. So.
Thank you.
And then as far as the deed restriction go, the other thing is we we do have to get certificates of occupancy on these homes. And I'm sure the township building department will be aware of that requirement and make sure that, you know, gets checked off the list, that those trees get planted.
Trustee, I think your concern is, and I have same as mine, which is Eagle's consideration what's safe today may not be what they consider safe later.
Exactly.
And, you know, as a parent, I may really want to know.
Then in 100 years, they're going to say this board approved the arsenic, you know, development. But maybe we'll all be gone at that point, so.
Well, we will also have emails from Eagle indicating that they did not need to review for this. So we can also put it right back onto them if they decide to do that.
Right, the standard is the standard, and, you know, that's what we have to follow, so.
Terry, I see that the barn is still there. Is that on, is that going to stay there or what's the what's the situation with that?
Can't can't stay because it, but it's fully on lot one, luckily. And so I've been working with two different groups that are have proposals out to relocate it. One is Holly Township. They're building a new like civic center with park and some activity buildings, and they have room for this barn. They are just searching for the money to move the barn. They've actually looked at it. They like it. And the other is the Franklin people, Pete Hallic, who they think they have a site now in Franklin that they could possibly move it to. And they're working on it. And I've tried to just stay in touch with both of them. Practically, if somebody came in, as soon as this plat was recorded, let's say a month from now, and said, I want lot one, it's going to take us six, eight months before we can even start a house so I don't have to knock it down for probably close to a year. And so we're going to try as we can. And I welcome anybody who's got a lead will follow it up in terms of trying to find a home for it if we can.
Well, I appreciate that. I sit on the board of the Bloomfield Historical Society as well. And I know I've had conversations with them. And so I know that there is a lot of keen interest to see it saved. But obviously, you own the land, and so you can.
But I will say that, so I was part of these. I'm glad to see that Pete's trying another route. So up until December of last year, Terry was working with myself and actually Pam, who was here earlier from Franklin, Alan Girros, and some other, so Bloomfield Township and Franklin coming together to try and save this. And the thing is, everyone wanted to save it. But when we went to raise money, we got almost to a million. We were getting there. But everyone wanted to save it, but we couldn't get anybody to put the money into. The easiest way was to just purchase it and keep it right where it was. And we tried, and I do appreciate you waited all the way till literally he delayed putting in the sewers. He delayed. I mean, we, it was December, and we tried. So it's good to see that Pete might have found another location. But then George, the township supervisor from Holly, I know he came out a couple of times.
Yeah, and he's had his barn right there, and they like the structure.
We thought we were going to have.
And he's been successful moving, he moved another barn to that property and raised the funds for it.
Maybe he can call his state rep, and they seem to love handing out money for pet farm.
I know he's talking to the Olton County people, so about, because they have some funds for him. But nobody's got enough to do the whole job of paying.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
We had enough to possibly purchase it, but it's the ongoing maintenance to keep it. We thought we had our first park.
Well, moving it to the farm was ruled out.
Awesome.
Because we talked about that at a focus group last year, was that if we could move it to the farm. And then we had this, because it was a focus group to see what what more things could be done with the farm property. And one of the things was to have like a farm-to-table restaurant and bring that barn and and put it on the farm property and have it have kind of a cool use with the chef. But I haven't heard the latest on is that that idea sort of not not happening?
Everybody has a lot of great ideas. We all have great intentions and great ideas, but we needed backing for all these ideas.
Sure.
And I do appreciate the patience because that was that was close. We were so close.
I'm ready to make a motion unless there's more discussion.
Anybody else? No?
Okay.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we grant approval of the final plat upon finding all the conditions that have been met and certify the township's approval, showing the date of approval in the final, on the final plat. If approved, a copy of the approved final plat shall be forwarded to the township clerk and the planning commission and the building department. And the clerk shall record these proceedings in the minutes with this meeting and send a copy of the final plat to the county plat board.
That was so well spoken. Trustee Burnett, motion?
I'm support. Before we vote, can I just ask our township council? So under the statute, if all the conditions are met, then the board shall approve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Support by trustee Showstack on the favor.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That does pass.
We can just add reluctantly next to mine, bud.
Right, all the conditions having having been met. That's our job.
Yeah.
Up or down?
Next, we have considering approval of the Franklin Woods final plat, also presented by Angela Heisinger. And to mention, the township engineer, you may notice, is a new title towards the end of Angela's name because she was promoted to our deputy here, which in the engineering department is called the township engineer. So congratulations.
Congratulations, all deserved.
All right, I will try to fly through this one a little bit faster. This is the final plat for Bloomfield Mill, which is located directly across the. It is comprised currently of two acres and proposed to be split into two resulting single-family residential lots. Here's a screenshot of the proposed final preliminary plat for Bloomfield Mill, identifying the two lots as well as the resulting private easement for the public sanitary sewer and the storm sewer and infiltration basin. Similar plat timeline as was presented for Franklin Woods. The plat approval timeline consisted of board approval of the tentative preliminary plat on November 9th. Final preliminary plat approval by the board on January 10th of 2022. The final plat was submitted to the board July 12th of 2023 and recommended for approval on July 19th and is being considered at tonight's board meeting. There was an additional approval by the township on the engineering plans. That approval was granted by the Engineering and Environmental Services Department on July 7th of 2022 with conditions. Again, this plat was reviewed under sections 18, 110, and 111 of the Township Subdivision Ordinance. All final plat requirements have been satisfied within that ordinance, and they are listed below. They're the same requirements that I went over for Franklin Woods. And it was also reviewed for under sections 5, 6, 0.131 through 198. Again, the it was found that all the final plat requirements have been satisfied in the Michigan Land Division Act, subject to the below conditions. Same sections prior to the recording of the final plat, the county board must certify the final plat. And then additionally, the infiltration basin proposed for this development has not yet been constructed. Therefore, an agreement and deposit by the developer is required. That's a copy of that agreement was included in the board memo. And should the board approve the final plat, the deposit will be made by the developer within five days. So prior to bringing the final plat before the board, there were previous conditions that were tied to approvals granted by the township throughout the plat process. Those conditions were tied to approval of the tentative preliminary plat and the approval of the engineering plans. And again, I'll just emphasize that any conditions that have not been met yet to date will be tied to the approval of the final plat for Bloomfield Mill. So conditions tied to the tentative preliminary plat approval for Bloomfield Mill consisted of having deed restrictions that stated evergreen screening shall be planted on the north and south property lines. With respect to the southern property line, there was a recorded restrictive covenant agreement between the developer and the seller of the property to install and continuously maintain an aesthetically pleasing natural tree fence consisting of 20 trees placed six feet apart plus additional plantings of arborvitae. That a copy of that agreement was included in the board packet for you to reference. And additionally, that covenant agreement is referenced in section 513 of the draft Declaration of Covenant Conditions and Restrictions, which a copy of that declaration was also included in the board memo. With respect to the northern property line, that area of the parcel is already well-vegetated with existing screening. So there is no intention to plant additional trees unless any of the existing trees providing screening are removed as part of the site or individual lot developments. This statement is referenced in section 5.13 of the draft CCRs. Conditions that were tied to the engineering plan approval are some of the same conditions that were tied to the final plat approval for Franklin Woods, including the execution of a bill of sale for the public sanitary sewer. The public sewer that was extended to serve these two lots has been installed. And the bill of sale for the sanitary sewer will be required prior to township acceptance of the system. Additionally, there's a condition to have deed restrictions on the storm sewer system. Section 5.18 of the draft CCR states that no structures, landscaping, or other materials are allowed to be placed in any of the platted easements which may damage or interfere with the installation or maintenance of the facilities. And lastly, there was a requirement for the execution of the stormwater management operation and maintenance agreement, which was a condition of approval prior to the Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office approving the engineering plans. That agreement was reported on March 25, 2022. So based on the documents provided in the board packet and consideration towards compliance with the stated conditions as presented, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees consider one of the following actions. The board shall either grant approval of the final plat upon finding that all conditions have been met and certify the township's approval, showing the date of the approval on the final plat. If approved, a copy of the approved final plat shall be forwarded to the township clerk. If approved, a copy of the approved final plat shall be forwarded to the township clerk, the planning commission, and the building department. And the clerk shall record these proceedings in the minutes for this meeting and send a copy of the final plat to the county plat board. Or the township board shall reject the final plat for not meeting all the conditions required for approval of the final plat.
Any questions? I look for a motion.
I move the top one.
I'll support.
Should I, trustee Showstack? Support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. You want to read that one again? Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
So next we have considering adoption of an ordinance to amend chapter 14 environment to add article seven. Yep, that's right. Article seven municipal separate storm sewer system. And we have director Cory Almas here today.
Good evening, board. At the June 26th Board of Trustees meeting, an ordinance amendment to chapter 14, article seven municipal separate storm sewer system, sections 14-147 through sections 14-164 was introduced. The proposed amendment would prohibit non-stormwater discharges from entering the township's MS4 and authorize the township to regulate and control the introduction of pollutants to enter the MS4 as required by the NPDS permit process. Staff's recommendation is that the board of trustees consider the adoption of the ordinance 667, a many chapter 14 environment, to include article seven municipal separate storm sewer systems, sections 14-147 through sections 14-164.
Any questions? I look for a motion.
Still moved?
Support my clerk, Brooke.
Support.
Support by trustee Faqui, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
You took the easy one tonight and made Angie do both the tough ones. That wasn't very nice. All right. Next, we have presentation of the Cable and Community Relations Department's annual report. This is director Carrie Lizat's first annual report, and she has some of her team members here, too. Do you want to introduce any of them while they're here, too?
They will be introduced. Absolutely. They absolutely will be. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Those of you who are watching later on our playback, I thank you. And those of you who attended our open house, our first kind of trial run in the open house, I think it was a great success. And I'm going to be sharing a lot of data tonight about different styles of communication. And for those of you that came, and those of you who are here in person, this is my favorite kind of communication, in person and face to face. And I celebrated one year with the township at the end of June, and I just wanted to begin by telling you what a pleasure it has been to get to know many of you. If we've had a meeting and it went off track, and you told me about your family or shared a story or maybe a secret, I want you to know that those moments are the best part of my job, and they are priceless. These conversations we have with each other, how we say good morning and how we say have a good weekend, it's really how we build a community. And it's something I was searching for in my career, and I want to thank all of you who helped create that culture here in Bloomfield Township. Thank you for showing up for me and the cable department and all of you who are watching later to find out what we do and being a part of this community. What is it we do? I'm going to do a whole overview. Next year will be shorter, but we are a communications hub for six communities. Bloomfield Township is about half, Bloomfield Hills, Beverly Hills, Bingham Farms, Birmingham, and Franklin Village. We support all of those with our cable studio and our community programming. Community programming for those six municipalities. And community relations for Bloomfield Township, which includes press releases, crisis communication, and other township needs. Who does this work? We are small and mighty. This is our five-person full-time team. I have two operations managers, Steve Rota. Steve is on the cable side. He oversees all the scheduling of our part-time crew and studio operations, helping manage our contract work with the Birmingham area cable board, the BACB. And Greg Black, who manages community relations, the writing and editing of all publications. The first six months, I think we spent a lot of time in our hiring process, and we were very excited and happy to welcome Amy McKeg, who has created this lovely presentation you're seeing tonight. Thank you, Amy. Without her, it would not be certainly what you're looking at. And who's Jose Uzman, who is our grants and engagement coordinator, who's been hosting our food trucks and writing furiously to get us more funding. Our part-time crew. Here we are pictured. There's 23 of all of us now, our part-time staff, our videographers, editors, production assistants, on-air talent, and producers. They do a lot of their work to support our cable contract. And one of the first things I did when I, when I got here is that these, there was a salary that was done in 2019, and the part-time staff was making a little more than $13 an hour. Now, I'm not going to say that it wasn't entirely incorrect because it was accurate regarding production assistance, but it didn't really reflect the current roles of part-time staff. So new positions were created, including videographer editor, producer editor, and on-camera talent producer. So everybody that was making around $13 an hour, it was increased to about $20 an hour. And it was really important to do that because we weren't competitive enough in the market to hire and retain the talent that we needed to do. So we are able to do that now. They work independently. They manage the tech for the government meetings on their own, without any supervision. All of them have four-year degrees and many have additional technical training. Many have also been with us a long time, and so I wanted to recognize that seven of those have had 10 or more years with us. They do other work and, but they are loyal to us and our community. And I want to say hello to Lee, Lee Solomon, who's in our control room right now. And there are a couple others that are not here as well tonight because they are at meetings throughout our community in Birmingham and Bingham Farms, running meetings concurrently. So even though there are only a few of us here, there's other things happening around town, and that's managed, an amazing job that they do with that. So we want to thank these folks for our service and our part-time employees. And for all these recorded governmental meetings that they do, which is a lot of what they support, we can do a pretty good job of measuring how many people watch, and it's not a lot. So I ask for your help in figuring out how to put a value on transparency and accountability in government, because that's what these recordings help provide, transparency and One of the reasons they've stayed and worked here is not because of me, but it's because of these two gentlemen. So if you guys can come up here, please, I have to have you come up so you can stand here and be recognized for the work that you've done, Steve Rota and Greg Black. This year, Steve Rota celebrated 25 years working for the township, and Greg 12, and they are both excellent stewards of community television, and they work remarkably, just amazingly well together. One of the items included in my board packet tonight is a paper titled, "Community Media in a Pandemic: Facilitating Local Communication, Collective Resilience, and Transitions to Virtual Public Life in the U.S." And in reading it, while I was already thinking about recognizing Steve and Greg's contribution, I wanted to make sure that we recognize the efforts they made during the pandemic. With retirements and part-time staff, it was really Steve and Greg that helped the township adapt to going virtual and not just with community producers, but also adding additional public meetings during a time that it was critical for residents to understand what was going on in their local government. This paper also talks about how PEG access has become a forgotten facet in America's media ecosystem. And while stations struggle to keep pace with technology and regulatory shifts, the pandemic gave them a chance to demonstrate their contemporary relevance. So I wanted to thank Steve and Greg for your contributions during that time. They both managed multiple roles, producing, directing, editing, camera operations, social media, and doing it all, while with a terrific attitude and tremendous patience. So you could call them the Swiss Army Knights, and I wanted to create a award for them because they're so awesome. And my favorite production tool is a Leatherman. So for each of you, I, you're both multi-talented, and I give you a multi-talented award because you can. It's a multi-talented award because you can and you have and you do do it all. You are appreciated, and I thank you both for sharing your wealth of knowledge that you have with me, welcoming to your team, playing along with my crazy ideas, because I know there's a lot of them. So thank you, guys. And Michael Kotmeyer, seven years, who is a part-time employee and was not added. I'm sorry, Michael. We're going to give you an extra present. We're going to get you asking something. Sorry, Michael. Facilities and resources that we manage, a thousand-square-foot studio, a new 2,500-square-foot podcast studio, and a high-definition production truck that is actually owned by the Birmingham Area Cable Board, but we manage all of that. The truck includes four high-definition cameras with additional input for four more, professional control room that is mobile and enables live graphics, audio, and replay. The podcast in the main studio, we share three robotic cameras, studio lights, ENG, which is electronic news gathering. There are about seven camera tripod, there are seven camera tripod packages that go out, all of varying ages. And we help to maintain all of the equipment in all the other communities that we serve, as was talked about tonight when Pam came up to talk about Franklin. These are our PEG communities and the channels that we broadcast on, and I just wanted to put those up there so that we see that we still do broadcast on television, and that is kind of our original reason for being. And I am going to talk about, a little bit about what PEG stands for, so that we are reminded how we're funded and where we're headed with that. PEG stands for Public, Educational, and Governmental. Pursuant to section 611 of the Communications Act, local franchising authorities may require cable operators to set aside channels for public, educational, or governmental use. And before we look at the budget, a quick review of PEG, because that is how we're funded and that funding is in jeopardy. So with this quick review, and then perhaps I'll do a study session down the road when I return from the NTOA conference. What's going on with this? Am I talking too close, guys? Anything happening? I'm popping? I'm talking too loud?
Oh, you can fix that.
What's that? You can fix it. And then the NTOA conference is the National Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors that happens in October, where I'll have more information about what the potential funding is. But just an overview, the fees, the national range is from 5% to 8% of a cable bill, and it's important to note that these fees are not, are only attached to traditional cable television practices and not to services like Hulu and Netflix. So as consumers have cut the cord, these fees have been reduced. Cable companies have increased rates to make up the difference, but we are still headed on a path where that revenue stream could go away. The other research included in the packet tonight is exploring the policy value of cable franchise and PEG fees, which looked at how these fees are spent in the top 20 largest cities in the U.S. It's from 2018, and Detroit was included in that top 20 list, but is no longer. And what this paper also did was provide a good historic overview of PEG. So I'm going to quote from that, this paper. "Franchise and PEG fees were originally conceptualized as a form of compensation for the public provided by cable companies to defray the costs associated with the use of public resources. PEG fees in particular were defined to provide financial support for the creation and distribution of grassroots diverse media content to bolster the marketplace of ideas. There is currently a U.S. House bill that is being described as a shot across the bow of local franchising and PEG centers across the nation." That's one of the reasons it's relevant. That's why I need to go to the conference to learn more about what's going to change, because there's a lot of disruption in the media industry right now, and it's not just with what's going on in PEG. That's why people are striking, the actors are striking, and the writers are striking. People are trying to like produce as much content as possible, and how are we going to pay for it? In the analysis of the top 20 cities in this paper, it was found that the majority of fee revenue does not appear to support communication-related policies or directly mitigate the costs borne by cities as a result of cable providers' infrastructure activities. And the authors argued that regulators must find new ways to hold communities accountable as the current fees are not justified by the results. Other language used in the study included discussion of lawsuits where the fees have dubious value and chronically opaque accounting practices. Given this discussion that is happening nationally and my role here in the township, I would like to see us be an example of how it should be done, why the funding should not just continue, but include these new forms of media. Now, more than ever, we need to tell our own stories. Captain Edwards and I had lunch with the director of the Free Press's Film and Video Department recently. And one of the things I took away from that meeting that we had with her is that she said, we were talking about her covering, or the Free Press covering, an upcoming exercise here in the township. And she said, "How often do we even cover Oakland County anymore?" She said, "We used to have a dedicated bureau of 20 journalists that were covering Oakland County that no longer exists." So in order to tell these stories about our community, it really is up to us in a way that it never was before, and I think we're equipped in order to do that. So here's where the revenue came from, and just as, this was not a very, this is what's posted on our website, and it didn't provide a lot of detail, so I wanted to take a closer look at where the revenue is coming from. And also because of the conversation that happened when, that went on at the March budget meeting related to our deficit, I wanted to look back and compare to where we were in 2013 to where we were in 2023. And you can see that, just to serve as more of a reminder of when the board may want to take a look at that fund balance and make an adjustment. Finance director Jason Tice was asked about the deficit at that March 31st budget meeting, and he said, "The easiest fix at any point is return more of the franchise fees back to the cable studio." So this chart shows in 2013, cable was getting all of the franchise fees at the time, and then in 2023, we, the cable got 10% of those franchise fees. And in 2024, we are budgeted at 20%. When we look over at the cable fees, those have gone down because I guess the cable fees were renegotiated from 3% to 2%, so that accounts for some of that. When we look at the BACB, that went from 178 up to 303 because we renegotiated the contract, which if you look to the next column, the charges for services, those charges for services that were almost $80,000 were à la carte, sports and other events that we did for the BACB that were now rolled up into that contract. So the new contract was signed in January 2022, and it is for five years. As far as like looking at earned incomes and studio rentals, which I would like to do, which we can do, we just need to be mindful of how to charge appropriately for space and equipment that is supported by the franchise fees. So that's something that I'm, you know, considering, and how do we, how do we do that appropriately? We are only open for business 40 hours a week, the studio itself, the mobile truck goes to events, and we send people to events in all different times of the day, so we're 24/7 business. So I think there is real opportunity to open our doors Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and evening hours, but how do we, how do we manage that growth?
Carrie, can I just ask while we're there? The franchise fees, we're still generating that much today?
It's a million, yes, a million dollars.
Oh, wow.
And it's mostly, so this year, 75% is going into the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
As far as budgeted expenses for 2023, the wages and taxes, that's, these, I didn't have a lot of control. This was what I showed up and was managing. We were, I think it was originally a $400,000 deficit is what was budgeted for 2023, and we ended up, I think it was about $200,000 was the actual deficit because of hirings that didn't happen and got delayed. So this year, I think it's about, also, I think about $300,000. I would have to, if you have more questions about the budget that are very specific, I would ask for Jason's help in answering those questions, and I would get back to you on that. But for 2024, the franchise fees were increased. But for 2024, the franchise fees were increased to $250,000. I know you'll have more questions on this, but we'll come back, revisit this. The types of programming we manage. So, we manage governmental meetings and public programs, almost 600 productions, and the school does the educational piece. They run the educational channel for us. The other communities, we do a little bit of all of it. In the government meeting list, you can see, oh, 94 total meetings for Bloomfield Township, and that's the distribution of those. And the public programs list includes our studio and podcast productions, lectures, concerts, events, and ENG again is electronic news gathering, that's a single-camera shoot. The BACB production van does sports, musicals, concerts in the park in the city of Birmingham. And digital programming is kind of, I don't want to say we added it, but that's what we really have been doing a lot more of. It's a hodgepodge of the shorter-form video content, and many of those are promoting township events, police and fire, recruitment. It was kind of like one thing, but we did, like, nine different videos under that recruitment project for the police. E-Ways, selection reminders, and a variety of video that we push out digital first. So, you'll see all those videos on Facebook. They get sent out in the e-news and in a variety of ways. We don't want to forget the recognition of our community producers, because that's one of the tenets of what we're supposed to be doing. And many of them, you can see from the number of years they've been producing, I think this is the list for those who have done 10 years or more, that they've been producing as partners in our community who volunteer their time to produce these programs, to educate our community. And in today's marketplace of ideas, content creatives are looking to monetize their content, and so that's something that's never been done for PEG community producers. So, I think one of the questions we have to ask ourselves is how does that relationship also evolve with the times? We've made updates to make better use of our studio space. If you came over to the open house tonight, you would have seen how, in the past, the Before Photo, we had two sets that were built there, and they were stationary, so they remained locked in. Those were your choices if you came in to produce, and now the space is a little bit more flexible. These talk-style shows have evolved into what we call podcasts today, so we created this new podcast studio by making the green room and conference room, which was in the past, we've doubled our production space. On the left side at the top there was the office of the cable director. I still have an office, but it's just not this one. That's the before and after of that space, which everybody seems to really enjoy. And we moved that furniture to the back room, so you'll see it there in the bottom right corner, where hopefully, in the future, we can put a studio manager to supervise productions and maintain our equipment. And we threw out, like, 30 years of old equipment, and we're still working on getting through all the paper, but it's really, looks absolutely beautiful over there. So, thanks to you all who helped make that happen. And that's just the video side, the cable side. We have digital engagement. We are seeing a lot of growth. Here are the top 10 most visited pages on our website. Other updates included the township news, where stories can be, that are found in e-news are now searchable by topic, we had a questionnaire for police and recruiting needs, and there's so much information on this website. While we would like to do another update, it's kind of like, when and where, how do we make that happen? We would like to make it more visual and intuitive, certainly. Here's a look at social media growth. Facebook reach increased by 131% over the course of this year. The reporting time was July 1st to June 30th, since I started, end of June. Next year, you'll get a real annual report for our actual fiscal year, but this year we did it my life here in the township. Instagram reach increased by 826%, and the number of published Facebook posts increased by 82%. The key, obviously, is, or not, is growing reaches to post frequently and consistently. And you can see in the Facebook page for the police department, it grew the most, largely due to the dedicated work of Nick Solley and combined with some of the videos that we produced for him, or for the police department, working with him. We have internal goals. I know that the fire department page is the ability to grow along with our BCTV Facebook page, and we're still trying to figure this out, because it's constantly evolving and changing. We can just look at Twitter and the last year and all that's happened there to wonder what will happen. Do we even want to invest any time in that? And there's a lot of opportunity for us to grow in many areas, so we have to, one of our challenges is always, what do we focus on next? For additional video and podcast distribution, we switched most of our digital distribution to YouTube in July of 2022. We also have podcasts going out on Podbean as being the primary distributor for that, which also feeds into Spotify and iHeartRadio, so you can listen to a lot of the podcasts that we do, and one of them being the Chief's new podcast as well. So, we have currently 338 subscribers on YouTube and almost 74,000 YouTube channel views with 49 Podbean downloads to date, so we have a lot of room for growth. Our Year in Review on our Facebook, this is Facebook, no. I see, I'm calling it Facebook. This is the Year in Review on our YouTube page. It launched in July 2023, and you can see on the timeline here where our videos really took off. It was right in this area here, and that's when we launched the videos that were driven by the police department. And then, if you look the next page, these are our top 10 videos for the year. Five of those videos were driven by the police department, four related to the recruitment campaign, one was Coffee with Carrie with Chief Gallagher that followed the incident at Temple Bethel. Two of the videos are sports-related, and one trustee meeting regarding water and sewer. YouTube is still something we're experimenting with. If the videos are tagged properly with hashtags, they can really take off for us. As the felony arrest video really is our most popular video for the year. It's in here twice, because when it firstly, when it initially got published, the title at the end for Captain Edwards was not on the video. And so, the next day, we put the title on, and we didn't want to stop the first one, because it had already kind of taken off, so we republished it again. It's the exact same video, except now it has his title on it. So, the video with his title lives in the playlist, if you look for now hiring videos, but it took off by hashtags, because the other channels on YouTube, if something is tagged "police" or "police training," will get played by other channels, and that one really took on a life of its own and kind of gave us an idea for the other kinds of videos that we should be producing. Email communication. The township e-news rate is 59%, and that's with almost 5,500 current subscribers. The senior news rate, senior e-news is a 53% open rate, and the e-news list is really where we want to focus our efforts on growing, because everything is in one place, and if people want to know what's going on, all the links to the videos, the stories, current events, it's in this e-news, and we can see that people are very engaged with that. We also brought back the employee news, which has been the BT Buzz, which people seem to really be enjoying, and reminds them of their benefits and all that's available to them as employees of the township. And we started a police recruitment newsletter that is specifically for people who show an interest in being a police officer, that at some point they were, they attended an event, we got an email from them. So, this is just a touch point, that every two weeks, they get an email reminder, letting them know what's been going on in the police department, specifically the Chief's podcast, and then taking them back to an opportunity to be hired for our department. The app is coming. We are stuck in a waiting zone for Apple CarPlay, so without that, we cannot move forward. So, that's what we're waiting on right now, and as soon as that's approved, it will look something like this, and hopefully, we have been making progress with Apple, but they were holding us hostage, and if anyone's dealt with Facebook or Apple and trying to do tech support, you understand the pain that we're experiencing there. We don't want to forget print communication, which is mailed out to 1,762 households, and we also do other print design in our department and produce flyers and brochures, the township stationery and business cards. We manage all that as well. Woo! A lot. The other thing that we added this year was our grants and engagement coordinator, and these are the grants that he's applied to thus far, that we've applied to. And the big one being, that took up a lot of time, was the Police and Cable Grant for $400,000. That's a Department of Justice grant, kind of the first one that we've done really at that scale for a national presentation like that. Here's Jose in front of a food truck, also doing community engagement, Food Truck Wednesdays, our open house that's planned for October, and additional events and celebrations. So, a quick case study of the police department, where we bring all the elements together, we can take a look at what has gone on around police recruiting. In December of last year, Captain Edwards asked if I could help with a recruiting video, and I didn't really have a good understanding of what it meant at that time in the challenging landscape of current police recruiting. And I'm happy I didn't know, because it allowed me to focus on the stories we needed to tell. But the goal has been to help recruit and hire 11 In order to do that, we made a series of videos, a now-hiring video, a welcome to Bloomfield Township Police Department, profiles of five officers. There's the main podcast, the first podcast with Chief Gallagher and Dan Edwards, related to what we're looking for, so recruits can hear directly from the chief, and the felony arrest video as a training example, all focused around the hiring. And this is the YouTube page, and we also put it on a Vimeo page, because it just looks cool there. We launched Chief Gallagher. We know he likes to talk and share stories, and so this is the perfect venue for him, and he comes in every two weeks to talk to someone within the department and give us an idea of what community policing is about, and also delivers a very short crime report. So, that's also been getting really excellent feedback. Just saying that we're trying to hire 11 patrol positions is not enough, was not a real story, so we created a story around the career of Captain Edwards, and what it was like when he hired in, where recruiting is today. We put out press releases, and this actually resulted in an officer being hired, because his aunt, someone's aunt, gave him this article. He went and researched the videos, and he came, ended up applying, came in for a video, came in for an interview, and he said in his interview that it was this path that led him to him being hired. So, that's one guy. We focus on press releases in addition to Nick Solley's weekly report. So, ours take on a little bit different, more of the personality, not just the crime that goes on. And the recruitment blotter that I talked about. This is the, this is the Police Department Facebook page that is doing extremely well, largely due to Nick's efforts. And I would like to, I wish that this highest post, this is the highest point on their chart, I wish that that was one of our videos, but it was not. It was a post related to a lost dog that could be adoptable, that you can see it took off, and there's like 90,000 hits or engagement with that particular post. So, we know that they love our animal shelter, our residents love their animals, and so we're trying to figure out ways that we can do better to incorporate them. We all know that Nick does a really excellent job at putting out consistent, relevant messaging. The videos have helped. That was this other, the other little, the bumps that you see that you see here. And here's the Facebook page again, where you can see the videos that came out during March, and this is the dog post here, and here are the top five videos that performed for them. The felony arrest video, like I said, took on a life of its own and had nearly 15,000 organic views on YouTube. It also led to our first national award in the general education and training category, and we were given an award, credit especially for us, for the cable studio that was presented at the Police Awards, and appreciation for the support and friendship, and partnership, well, and friendship, too. So, all of this communications builds an ongoing relationship with many awards. The results from the campaign thus far has resulted in five officers being hired, 28 interviews of the right kind of person, so it filters out the ones that maybe don't have a bachelor's degree, which is required by our department, and there's three currently in background, which means that they're, have not been offered a job yet, but they're exploring that, they made it that far. The ongoing relationship with the police helps my department better understand what needs to be communicated, and we can help out not just with recruitment, but emergency preparedness. We can look for future funding opportunities, and all of these combined help lead to a safe community. And one of my challenges is how to manage the communication needs of all our departments in a similar way. So, what does the future look like in this creative communication hub of activity? The future grants, there's one that's, for example, Training and Services to End Elder Abuse Later in Life in order to aid and educate our seniors regarding abuse, specifically financial scams. That application's due in February 2024. I'll be attending the NTOA Conference in October to learn best practices for my peers and how community media will continue to be funded. BCTV, or is it a new name that better represents growth beyond TV, something like Bloomfield Community Media? We have the ability to set the bar for other communities, taking our stories beyond our borders. The grant that we wrote in partnership with the police department was also part of the packet, and I included it because it really showed a culmination of all of the work that we've done together. And even though the $400,000 grant is to create a toolkit for use by other agencies to make it easy for small to mid-sized agencies to create a plan for their recruiting needs, but it also creates the training videos that we would use for ourselves to celebrate our own department and to educate people about the training and what goes on to become a professional police officer. The grant application leverages all this work for national marketing effort built around the felony arrest video that performed so well for us, so we'll find out in October. But even without the grant, the writing of the grant provides a roadmap for the videos that we can make. So, with the grant's money, we can produce them at a much higher level of production. We can produce them more quickly. We can fund the overtime and some of the cable salaries with that, but we can still stretch that work and those projects out over the next three or four years as far as the kinds of training and programming that we can offer. And we also currently focused on the big reality-based training event that will happen in August. We can look at bringing more of the community into our studio to tell their stories. So, this is Philip doing an interview with the American Cancer Society, and I just wanted to thank, I know Phil's not, he is here. He also took on the job, Philip teaches, he's one of our newest part-time employees. He also teaches at Lawrence Tech, and we're so happy to have him and his expertise, because he really helped us get organized over in the studio tonight, both our equipment and our media, our digital media. It's a lot of content, it's a lot of space that we're taking up, and we're still trying to figure out the best way to manage that as we grow. This is potential work for hire, where we can open up more to others in the community. And offering education and workshops. So, this is something that is being done at other PEG stations throughout the country, and what might we be able to do here in Bloomfield Township. Our green room, we make this a space available as a resource to community members. These are our friends from the American Cancer Society when they were in for their shoot. And I end with a photo from our production with the police department, as I think one of the real accomplishments this year was the relationship and trust built between the two departments. And it wasn't on my list of to-dos when I got here, so part of the satisfaction is the surprise that came with this happening. It's something we've continued, and other departments are getting used to having us around as well. And that concludes my presentation, if there's any questions.
No.
I just, go ahead.
No questions. The ability to tell a story, and I know you look at stories, and you just gave a magnificent story of your department and your team and what they provide to the township, and to be applauded. provide to the township, and to be applauded for that, and just a great presentation to begin with. On top of that, just showing the, how the department has evolved over the years. I don't want to date myself, but I've been there since early on, and I know how much it's changed and how much it's grown. And even in the past year, how you and your team have helped it grow and adapt so much more, and you could see it in your presentation with the podcasts, with more social media, and moving forward with all of your ideas. So, congratulations to you and to your team for what you've accomplished and what I know you'll continue to accomplish in the future.
Thank you.
Well, I, I agree with everything that Trustee Barnett said, but my first thing was, wow, you have been here one year, and you and I talked when you first came, and you know I'm a former tech kind of person, and what you guys have done as a team is so impressive. And it, I mean, you've just really turned everything around. You've put a face. I see things with the township, I've seen the police videos. I have one question, was you mentioned you had 338 YouTube subscribers?
Yes.
And isn't there something where if you hit 1,000, you actually can make money on that? Is that correct, or is that not at the governmental level?
We, we can make money, but it's not really a lot of money. I don't ever, I don't think that that's really.
Okay.
Because I know a revenue stream, and I, and I say this because I have managed another channel that has reached that, and it was never really worth a lot of time.
Well, I, I know that through my son who has a small business, and he was saying, anybody want to like me, because when I get to 1,000, and I don't know how much that is, but on his level, it might be more worthwhile. But the only other thing is, well, thank you to all of you, but just last week, I met with the shelter and was so excited to talk with them, and Nick Soli, of course, who's awesome. And I was asking, I'm an animal foster lover person, and that's why I went in for a tour to see all the cool things that have happened over there. And one of the things I asked was, could I help them, promote them, you know, feature a dog this week, or a cat, and write little bios, like I know the shelter that I volunteered at does, to try and get those wonderful animals homes. And I know I learned a lot last week about how that happens, and initially it was like, yeah, you can do that. And I was like, no, you can't do that. It has to come through the police or the cable department. And to my surprise and delight, I saw, we featured a dog. And I don't know if that was you or Nick Soli in the police department, because I know you are the two people that can do that. But I saw that on social media, was it two or three days after I came in and talked about, could we do something like this? And there it was. And anything I can do to help support you, please let me know, because that is my passion, is animal welfare. And I, I was just shocked, and I couldn't believe it. I was like, wait a minute, we just talked about that. How did that get online already? So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm speechless. I mean, I don't know what to say, but thank you to you and the entire team. What I can add is that every day, you can see the positive energy that emanates from, from the cable building and the people that are in it. And congratulations, and thanks very much.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, not only is your energy palpable, but I think it's also contagious, and that is evident by the work that you and your team have been able to do. And, you know, I could go on and on with all the things that you've done, and I think it's just a testament to, when you are creative and you're willing to do the hard work, you can really make something out of nothing, and you have really done that, and I look forward to what you'll continue to do. And I'll echo Trustee Murray's comments with regard to any support, you know, I'll speak on behalf of myself. I fully support this department, and I believe that there is lots of room to grow, and I have no doubt that you will, you know, sky's the limit.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll just fifth what everyone's already said. I would add that, you know, I've been here six and a half years. This is the first time I can remember seeing the entire cable department, both full-time and part-time here. So, I think that really speaks wonders for your building a team environment. One thing to consider for next year, I mean, this is a great report, is to see everybody back here, is, you know, we can do our own kind of cable awards and get some of the program people to come in, bring them into the, to the meeting, and, you know, give out best show or best, you know, I don't know.
First of all, you know, you're my unicorn, so we'll get to that. But I really appreciate that you thanked two people that got us through the pandemic. When I started, I don't think people fully understand how much Steve and Greg were taking on it at the time. We had Joe, and then Joe went part-time. And to think of what you did, first of all, thank you. So, thank you for thanking them. I get a little teared up because they did a lot. And they had part-timers, but not as many of you now, so thank goodness you're all here too. But I kept saying I needed a unicorn, because the stories from all the departments that need to get out there, the stories from the community, you know, living here our whole lives, there's so much to learn. So, thank you for being that unicorn, to come and breathe life into not only the cable department, but like you said, the, the police department and others. And you even got Jason to get on video. I mean, this is, this is my waltering in a bit, so thank you. Because now that we've gotten the police, now you're moving on to fire, and we have 11 other departments that we're going to highlight, and it's just, it's great to have a voice, to help have this team, and to see that many is amazing. So, thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so it's going to be hard to top that, but we got Trenton Maholsky today.
Better on the mic.
Although you're always a fun one. I, I always enjoy when you're here, because it's fun. Considering approval of the Oakland County Critical Infrastructure Grant.
Good evening. So, this is a procedural update to a grant program that they, this was a brand-new grant program last year. They had rather onerous deadlines that they did not meet. When I say they, the Oakland County, the purveyor of the grant, they did not meet their own deadlines. And in fact, the original agreement, which I had approved about a year ago, was never approved by their board. And what occurred is, again, the due date for the grant, for the work to be completed was 4/1 of 2023, and it was, no one completed the grants, nor had they intended to by that point. So, this amendment is to extend out that grant agreement date per the county, and then hopefully they get it approved by the board. This work is already either accomplished or being accomplished right now, and it's in the current budget, so there's no additional funding necessary. Literally, this is a procedural thing, because they never approved the first grant, and they extended out the deadline for the grant. We should complete these projects this fiscal year. So, I'm asking for approval to allow me to act as the agent to sign the grant agreement with those amendments in mind.
Any questions? I look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Support.
By Trustee Murray, support by Trustee Barnett, on the favor.
Aye.
Aye. On the opposed, that does pass. Next, we also have Noah up there for consideration of the authorization of ordering fiscal year 2024-2025 vehicles.
Yeah, so, an issue that we're looking to address, it's kind of the reason why we're here, is a little reverb from COVID, you know, the auto industry's still going through a lot of ups and downs. If you've looked at any brand of vehicle, any lot right now, or our vehicle lot, there's about a third of the vehicles on those lots than there normally is. And what that indicates is, is significant supply chain issues. And we're trying to work through those issues, particularly, there's a few red thumbs out there, and I included a vehicle list for you to peruse. So, one thing I draw your attention to is we received no vehicles in 2022, 23, right? So, we had to move all those purchases up to this fiscal year. Similarly, the, there, we're getting notices from the auto dealers that they're not going to make even certain types of vehicles for an entire year. And what does that mean? They're probably making these vehicles to sell to the general public, because they can command a much higher revenue with that, whereas our state contracts and our MyDeal contracts that we purchase our vehicles off of, those are significantly reduced. So, they're making a business decision to sell the vehicles that are higher value to the one-off customer rather than their contract partners, which is their fleets. So, like I said, they, they aren't making escapes. We, we shifted gears on escapes, and edges are being produced right now, and they're very similar in price. There, there's not a real premium to the edges. So, in the order to keep our fleet in order and keep moving forward with our purchases, we shifted those purchases to edges, right? Additionally, they weren't making Transit Connect vans, or the Connect, they don't even have anymore, but the, the larger transit van that we're working with, with our water department and our meter vans, there was a freeze on those builds for quite a while, and they were kind of in a black hole, two years of orders out there. And they finally, just two weeks ago, opened up the, or a month ago, opened up the, the purchasing pool for those transits, and we hope to get them. They're telling us in two weeks or so, we may get those vehicles in, right? So, interceptors, horrible situation going on with them. We have several years on back orders still, and then we have several years going forward, 25, we're looking at, you know, we buy five to six, seven police interceptors a year. We're behind by two years right now, and we have no clue when we're going to get these interceptors, right? And with interceptors, you've got every other community competing for those interceptors right now. Additionally, I mean, we really, literally, and I can't state this enough, we have no build timeline on police vehicles at this point, right? So, what I'm asking is for the flexibility to order, what's going on is the, the big three are opening up their pools with no notice on when we can purchase a vehicle. Sometimes we put the orders in for them, and they're produced in two or three weeks. And sometimes we put the orders, like the police cars, where we're one to two years behind, and the orders are in. So, we have no way, there's no predictability in the vehicle purchasing realm anymore. And so, what we need is the flexibility in the DPW to purchase the vehicles when they become available, right? And so, what I'm not asking for at this point is any amendments to the budget. But what I'm asking for is to be able to purchase the vehicles. I may come back to you at a later date, like, let's say, for some reason, we can get all the police interceptors that we can get our hands on, right? I'm going to take them from Ford, right? And then I'll come back with a budget amendment. Do I think that's going to happen, since we've been sitting on them for two years? I don't know. I'm not confident that that will happen. What I'm asking for is the tools and the flexibility to make the orders on the vehicles. Then when we come out at the end of the fiscal year, I will either make a budget amendment within those budgets, or I will deny the vehicle. Okay? So, Ford has told us, don't worry, we can sell these cars anywhere. So, if you order a vehicle and it turns out that it's not palatable for the budget amendment, let's say, in one instance, there may not even be a budget amendment required, right? If we are delivered less than the budgeted amount of vehicles in police, I won't even need a budget amendment, because we still can't get as many vehicles as we want, right? So, but what I'm asking for is that flexibility to go ahead and put the orders in when Ford tells us they're going to start building these vehicles, and then kind of pick up the pieces after and say, okay, we need a budget amendment if we want these vehicles to be delivered, or we will deny the vehicles at that time, right? My opinion would be, don't deny the vehicles, make a budget amendment at that time, but I don't know, I can't predict what the size, scale, and scope of that may look like. And, you know, my gut feeling on this is that it'll all shake out in the wash, that we're going to probably, some vehicles will be, just like we've seen even in the last two weeks, some of the vehicles will be accelerated in their purchase, and some, they won't even build them. So, I think in the end, it'll all kind of come out in the wash. What we cannot do is kind of say, oh, well, they'll figure it out, and then we'll have the vehicles, right? Because that has not occurred over the last three years. I kind of liken it, I mean, there's a lot of factors at play, prices of the vehicles and that public versus the fleet pricing, that is certainly an issue. COVID, you know, we, I liken it to a dog emerging from the water, right? They're no longer in the water. We, we're out of the water at this point, but the dog still needs to shake off, right? And so, that's what these auto industry, these suppliers are doing right now. The reverbs are going through their systems, the just-in-time delivery, all these things, and the reverbs are kind of shuttering the system. So, will there be an end to it? I hope, right? If you believe in the free market, if there's someone who wants a vehicle that has the funding, there should be someone there that produces that vehicle at the price of the market, right? And that's a key tenet. So, we should get back to that point. That being said, you know, I don't, I can't predict. In an unprecedented, you know, emergency that we dealt with, I can't predict how this, you know, is going to turn out. Never have I been in a situation where we can't even get firm timelines on a vehicle we ordered, right? We've heard a lot over the last few years about fire purchases, our own plow trucks, oh, they're 365 days out. I'd be happy if Ford could give us how many days out things are, right? My fear, like, you just think about police cars, this pent-up demand is going to be there, right? And that causes problem for the upfitting side, because you've got every other police agency fighting for those vehicles. Once they finally open the floodgates and produce the vehicles, the capacity to outfit these vehicles is not present here. So, and again, when we're, that's why those business relationships with our suppliers are going to become important. But it's, we're navigating through some unprecedented waters here, and so that's why I wanted the flexibility. And then I think it gives some comfort in the fact that we're not amending a budget, so we're not talking about increased costs at this point. I'll make that case later, if, depending on what, like, certainly if we, if they're telling us they can deliver all these police interceptors, I'm going to be back here and saying, we should take advantage of the fact that they're producing these for the first time in three years, right? So, and we, if you think about the 2025, 24, 25 purchases, the prices we'll get are this year's prices. So, there's some savings in that, right? Because they're going to go up for next year. So, tertiaryly, that isn't the real driver of doing this, but we should save whatever inflationary number from this year to next year on the, on the bids. So, and we will still utilize the statewide bid, which, as part of their rules, they have to give the best price to the fleet, so.
Great. Any questions?
I just had one question, and it's more going backwards a little bit, just from my own knowledge, is in, and like, things like, I understand, you know, the, the police cars and the trucks and the things that they need, but in terms of like, the motor pool, inspection, assessing, where they have those, I guess, edges now instead of the escapes, what is the typical life of one of those? Years, miles?
It's, just even in that group, you can't really predict, like, assessing has way different usage patterns than a building inspector. So, an assessing-type vehicle lasts much longer than a building department-type vehicle, and you'll see that reflected in our replacement plans, which we try to go out 20 years for vehicle. Vehicles are very predictable. We know how many miles people drive, we know the conditions, we know how much, how long cars typically last, so it's easy to predict those things. So, all that's included in the vehicle replacement plan. PD, for instance, is driven by the 100,000-mile barrier. Once we get around that point, we start to look at replacing those vehicles at that point. So, it really depends, like, our plow trucks, we can get 25, 20, 25 years out of them due to the way we take care of them. They're just a different animal than even a fire truck or a, you know, you really have to dig into the average usage patterns. We do get more life than most out of it due to our, we use AMS oil, due to our repair regiment, we do get higher, command higher resale values and do get more life out of the vehicles. Additionally, what is kind of pushing this shift to a motor pool, we, during contract negotiations several years ago, we got rid of a lot of department-head vehicles, and we went to more of a motor pool-centric, where if you need a vehicle, you order one from motor pool, and they give you a vehicle that you then attend a class or whatever, you know, you would have to do. So, that, we used to have a glut of used vehicles that our motor pool utilized and to use as these loaners. When we took away those vehicles, we no longer had that pool. So, what you see there for motor pool is building up our motor pool, so we actually have vehicles in the stock. So, and the, and the intention is to kind of right-size that and do it slowly. We don't know exactly how many vehicles we're going to need, so we don't, you know, we're, we're, the attrition of the old vehicles going out, we're kind of gauging that so that we know how many to buy, so we're not heavy on a vehicle.
Well, and you've got so many different types of vehicles. I'm, I'm sure there's a lot to it. I was just curious. But I, I totally hear you, what you're saying, because I was just recently in the new car market, and even, you know, for a regular person, there, we don't have any of that. don't have any of those and we don't know when they're coming in, or this one just came in and they even go above MSRP. I mean, you know, we, we don't like shopping for cars at this time either. So I can only imagine that when you've got a negotiated price, like you said, they're going to.
Yep, I mean, it's business, right? They can make, command a top dollar. No, I, I tend to think there's some value with the fleets and, you know, we're steady purchases that doesn't fluctuate as much by the economy. So I think there's some value. What we need is a time in the economy to remind the big three of how big of a customer we are.
Well, and when are we going to get past the, the chip need and the COVID slowdown?
That's all the other re, you know, it's not just COVID, it's, I mean, I guess the chips, you could tie to COVID too, right? It's all revert, we all think we're out of it, right? And as we know, last year, supply chains were horrible and we saw horrible inflation. This is just the next chapter in that.
I do like your analogy though. I look to Brian because I always say, I love Noah analogies.
I tested that one on a few people. People think we're, from even from an emergency management standpoint, I believe we're out of COVID, right? But supply chain, inflation, economy impacts, not out of COVID. Construction, certainly not out of COVID.
That was a perfect visual and I might poach it.
I pride myself on that.
Along that analogy, as, as the dog has been shaking, I guess from a budgetary standpoint, we haven't been spending, or maybe when the dog's been in the lake, we haven't been spending the money and we've been, you know, indirectly building a surplus and then putting that surplus in an equipment and capital reserve and now which, which has amounted to close to $10 million. So I, I think, you know, in, we've been saving for the dog.
The rainy day is here, right?
And the rainy day is here. And you know, one way or another, we're going to need vehicles and we have the money. So I, I fully support, you know, what, what you're suggesting because when they're available, we have the money, we should spend it. It's exactly what we have the money for. And we don't necessarily know when, but we need it and we have the money, so we can. So I, I, I fully support what you're suggesting.
Yeah, my concern would be, you know, we need the equipment, we don't have it, right? So that's why even if we get into a thing where it's an amendment versus coming back to you or denying a vehicle, I will strongly advocate to take the vehicle, especially depending on like a police interceptor, certainly, you know? But yeah, that's, that's definitely, we want, this is an unknown and a very, I'm very nervous about this situation, right? So this will give me the ability to try and overcome these issues.
And to Brian's point, we, we specifically created that equipment fund, so it's not part of the fund balance. It, it, we know our earmarks, we know where it's going. So if you can get interceptors, you bring them forward.
Yeah, believe it, and get them built.
Right.
That's going to be a problem too.
Right. Are there any other questions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support, oh, can I, just to, with regard to the motion, I want to clarify, it's an unusual motion, so I want to make sure I understand what it is, right? So you're asking for the board to authorize a DPW director to purchase vehicles as presented? Should they become available, subject to board decision on any required budget amendment?
Yes, and if they become available. It's not a guarantee I'm going to order all these because they're not taking orders on half these vehicles right now.
This way, you don't have to come back to the board or?
Well, I may miss a window.
Right.
They may have it open for three weeks, three days, and then I'm here waiting for a meeting two weeks later and we missed the window and we can't get them. So I want the flexibility and if it usurps any budget issues, I'm coming back to you guys. And we're going to apply our purchasing policy in the same way as required. So it's to give that assurance that you're not giving me carte blanche to go out there and spend, you know, the bottom line dollar amounts here, right? If, if this ends up shaking out where a budget amendment's needed, you will see me back here and the decision point will be amend the budget or deny the vehicle.
Well, and, right, and to your point that, you know, if you agree to order the vehicle and it comes in and it's just, we just say, well, no, we can take eight, but not 10 or whatever, there, they've got people waiting in line to buy them so he can turn them back. It's just more like the authority to make the, put in the order when the order is.
If I had to guess, we won't be there because they will not come through on, I mean, they're going to perform at the level they performed last year, which was no vehicles, to this year, which is about half of what we're getting, right? So, and, and all the ones that are highlighted in the blue above in the previous fiscal years are already accounted for. So what I'm betting is we're probably not going to get some of those, but other ones we didn't plan on getting are, we're probably going to get. So it's kind of like a, you know, I want to just take them when, what we can get, when we can get it, if at all possible, and not have the barriers in place.
Should I summarize that again or?
I think you're right on. But yeah, I think you're on.
He has to write the minute, so he's just making.
Exactly.
Making sure the motion's right. So motion by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Next, we have our superintendent Paul Horan here today to talk about considering award of the Water Cliff Stream Bank Stabilization Project. Another example of our preparedness with the capital fund.
Good evening, board. How are you guys? I think we should have walk-up songs when we come.
Dare I ask what yours would be?
I don't know, I guess it depends on my mood, right? Maybe a Bob Seeger or ACDC.
Turn Carrie loose on this if she had the time for it.
Or some poor non-blondes. The Water Cliff, the stream, the stream bank that's located at the rear of the property of 1266 Water Cliff, it is a part of our stormwater asset management plan. And it's also a section of the, of the overall storm system for that development. We own just that little conveyance section of that stormwater system in that development. There was some kind of agreement back in the day where we maintained just that, that section of it. It's about 180 feet. During the major storm in June 2021, the heavy rains and the resulting runoff caused that bank to erode and is now encroaching onto the private property and onto the patio, deck patio, support post that is connected to the house. So that erosion is right there, pretty much, right? I, I believe like it's almost exposing some of the cement for this support post. This project would consist of stabilizing about 180 feet of the, the stream, of the stream bank. It, it would, they would reshape and relocate the stream away from the existing patio structure. This project was put out to bid and the, the bid that came, there was only one bidder and HRC did vet them. They called all the references and they, all the references came back good. Their bid was for $138,154.65. And with the recommendation of HRC, we recommend that this project is awarded to CATSCALES Remedial Contracting Services in the amount of $138,154.65 as the lowest capable bidder and the only bidder.
Do we have any questions?
Is that a not to exceed? Is that a fixed bid? Is that unit priced? What is that? So.
Take a voice from a fire.
Includes 15%.
Are you pointing out the idea that there's a 15% contingency in there of $18,000? So maybe the motion should be up to 138?
Well, first I wanted to understand what it was before we get to the details of it.
Yeah, they actually built in a contingency higher than our normal contingency of 10%.
Right, so they're, you know, I would think that, you know, maybe, hopefully it comes in $18,000, less than 138.
Yeah.
So maybe we, you know, if there is an emotion, it would be up to 138.
Right.
Or no more than 10% contingency.
But if contingencies don't happen, they wouldn't get paid for them. But if they're unit price, they're turning in the actual bills and units, so they wouldn't get paid that way. Like a flat rate versus a unit price.
HRC sets those contingency rates based on the type of work that it is. I don't, I don't know why they varied away from the 10% to a 15%, maybe due to the special type of work that it is with green infrastructure and that, and green soft methods used in it. What I would say is make that up to the 138,000 to include that contingency, but it, it will not go over that amount, right? So that, I don't, not, I wouldn't want to pigeonhole the project not knowing exactly why they went from 10 to 15% in that contingency, but they felt that was necessary to cover potential contingency issues on site.
And I guess no, along those lines, given that this is earth movement or structure and whatever, what are the thoughts about having an issue while they're doing this and then while they're on site needing additional authority? Do we need to?
Like if there was a flooding event or?
Or they need to spend additional because there's something that wasn't.
Unforeseen.
Known at the time and they need to do it because they're there and now it's an emergency.
We wouldn't, this is, so there's a plan in place with Egle, with the State Oversight Agency, and we, if we vary away from that permit, we have to have modifications done to that permit. There's really no wiggle room. It's a, it's a very small, it's really basically an open pipe. It's really, I can jump across the ditch, or I would call it a ditch where I'm from, it's a stream, it's kind of intermittent stream. But, so there won't be any issues from flooding, it's got a real high bank on the other side. And, and this thing's been studied pretty extensively, I don't think, knock on wood, I don't think we're going to have anything pop up at us. It's a pretty canned project, so.
I'd point out that the contingency was in HRC's estimate, it's not in the bid.
So really anything over that 138 and per the, anything over, I don't expect any overages in this project, period.
The right, the right-hand column says engineers estimate Hubbell Roth and Clark, 138,570 with an $18,000 contingency. The first, the middle two columns are CATSCALES Remedial Contracting Services for a total bid of 138,154.65 with no contingency.
It's confusing.
I think either way, you're up to the 138 would clear that up. We're going to, you know, any pay estimates or anything generated on account of this project will be part of that without the contingency. That will be a change order, that we will come back.
So coming back to your point, are you going to add in, are you going to add a contingency to this to allow either the supervisor or DPW to authorize change orders or not? Or we're just going to say the bid is the bid, they approve the bid?
That was a practice we started last year to specifically put that in motions rather than sort of build it in.
Maybe just put in the 10% as part of the motion and then it.
Again, I'm pretty confident this one's going to come in right on. So if you guys want to give that leeway there, that would be, you know, would allow for that movement, but I think we're going to be right on, so. There should be no ambiguity, it's a pretty small canned project, so.
Well, if you don't see any need for additional.
Why give them the illusion they have it? Unless I would put it in with the bid amount, that's the amount we expect to get this project.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, let's do it.
Any other questions? I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to accept the overall low bid offer from CATSCALES Remedial Contracting Services in about up to 138,154.65.
Support. So motion by Clerk Brooks, support by trustee Fahey, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
So again, we have superintendent Paul Horan for the consider award of the Maxwell Tank Rehabilitation Project.
So the Maxwell Tank is also part of our stormwater asset management plan that we maintain and due to that same storm in June 2021, the design capacity of that tank was exceeded, the hydraulic pressure due to all the water forced into it caused the southeast corner of that tank to, to blow out and to have water come out of that, that blowout of that tank. HRC did do a structural condition, condition assessment on the tank and found that overall the tank was, it was still, it was in fair condition, but it needed to be repaired. This project would consist of cleaning, structural concrete repair, crack, sealing and coating. The over, there's an overfold pipe that needs to be removed and replaced. That, that overfold pipe discharges into a drainage ditch on Hillline Trail, which is behind Maxwell Court. This was also put out to bid and there was two bids for this project. Z Contractors had a bid for $518,501. Pullman was the other bidder, their bid was for $769,500. HRC has worked with Z Contractors in the, in the past on several other projects and, and they, they believe that they are qualified based on their experience with Z Contractors. We all, we recommend that we award this project to the low bidder, Z Contractors, in the amount of $518,501.
Is this in the budget?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Which budget?
Last year, it didn't get to happen, so it was pushed to this year.
So where in the budget is it? Is it DPW? Is it, it's not a large sewer, right?
No, it's in the, it's underneath the general, engineering's within the general fund.
It's under general fund and there was a new category created for stormwater when we went into this endeavor.
That was in this budget.
Certainly. Yeah, this been in the till for three years, since the rain events.
Yeah, it was in there, then COVID meant they couldn't do it, so then it got moved to this year. So the money actually went into the capital improvement fund for both projects last year for this year.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Do you warrant these?
We will make sure that product is done properly and there are surety bonds and insurance are all part of this.
So as much as a surety bond for performance, there's bonding and everything that covers it. So it'll be up to us to make sure we get the product that we, I think the maintenance guarantee bonds are two years typically. So that's an effect, a warranty or else we go after their bond.
If we were to, I guess, just, if we were to replace this, what would be an estimate for replacing this versus repairing this?
Millions. Yeah, 10, 11 million bucks if possible. And if we replaced it, there are new stormwater standards now that we would have to conform to, and so it may not even be possible.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the project and awarding the contract to Z Contractors. Support.
Motion by trustee Shostak, support by trustee Barnett, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
Thank you.
And now we have Ms. Katie Fatherby, our Public Works Manager, to come and talk about considering approval of the 2023-2024 Great Lakes Water Authority, also known as GLWA, Industrial Waste Surcharge Resolution.
Good evening. This is a nice, easy one for you. This is an annual thing that I come to the board for every year. Industrial waste control charges, IWC, they are assessed to only our commercial industrial customers. And it's about offsetting regulatory activities related to the Clean Water Act. There's also another portion related to the IWC charges for a pollutant surcharge. So if they discharge like a high strength wastewater amount into the system, that's an additional fee that they might have to pay. But GLWA does evaluate users in the system to identify who would have that. And currently in the township, there is nobody, there are no commercial customers that pay that charge. There used to be, Costco at one point, used to. Internally, both of these charges are set as a straight pass-through cost. They're paid to GLWA through Oakland County. There are no administrative charges. They are only levied on our commercial accounts. They're not applicable to any residential accounts. And out of our 13,000 total sewer customers, there's only levied on approximately 400 of those commercial accounts. So it's a small amount and the updated costs are in the draft resolution I included and they will become effective on billings rendered after July 1st and they reflect a 2% increase. We recommend that the draft resolution we provided be approved.
Any questions? I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett, support by treasurer keeps, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have considering approval of an amendment to the Board of Trustees fireworks policy presented.
So we get to talk about fireworks twice tonight and this is to discuss a Bluefield Township Board of Trustees fireworks policy that was adopted originally in 2012 after the state amended fireworks laws, which allowed. after the state amended, um, fireworks laws, which allowed, um, much greater use of fireworks in the community, both recreational. And this is, this concerns really this, just the display type fireworks, which require, like tonight, like we saw tonight, which require a permit process that comes to the board. The board decides what to do. Uh, the recreational that are permitted by law are, you know, do not need a pa- a permit and, and, you know, we're aware of those ongoings in the, in the community each year. The changes that, uh, I'm proposing are in red line, um, to the original Bloomfield Township fireworks policy resolution adopted by the board. First, on the, on the first page is a, actually a, a change that has already occurred. Two years prior, we, uh, revised many of the fees within the township. One of those fees we revised was to change the fireworks permit fee from two hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and eighty dollars. We've been charging the two hundred and eighty dollars. It just has never been put into the policy itself. Um, so that's the first change. The second change of substance is, uh, that if the board were to approve a permit, that in a date change, change became necess, becomes necessary, this can be accomplished with approval of at least two of the following supervisor, clerk and treasurer, if the date is the only change to the permit. So if our fire marshal determines that everything else is the same and the safety protocols are, are continuing to be in place and, and there are no other changes other than the date, um, that one of the three, uh, between the supervisor, the clerk and treasurer could approve the date change. And what that does, I think the intent here is that, is that we found at least one instance, um, fireworks got delayed way into July, which were meant for, uh, the Fourth of July, you know, fireworks display of a gut. But because the board could not meet in time, uh, they had to wait and delay that for an additional two weeks. So it made sense to allow for just date changes, um, given the unpredictable weather and, and other events that can cause them to be delayed. This helps to keep things within the more narrow span, um, and subject to the decision of one of the, you know, two of the three of us. So I suggest we would consider making a change to the policy as presented.
Any questions? No, I personally would have rather had that other one two weeks prior and that was literally the only change. So I, I normally am not fond of a lot of ordinance changes, but this one makes sense. Yeah, especially when we're talking about, sorry, policy change, talking about shortening that window, it makes a lot of sense.
Well, one of the ones that have been rescheduled twice now is actually going on tonight, so that's how far it's gotten.
Right, but they did want it much earlier. It was because of our policy that they had to wait till the next board meeting, so it could have been.
And they got canceled once because of weather and once because of the, um,
California wildfire.
The, the Ca- the Canada wildfires, yeah.
Sorry, Canada, yeah.
Yeah.
So do we have any other discussion? I look for a motion.
I'll make the motion and, uh, it's well thought out, thank you.
Yeah.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Barnett, support by Trustee Key, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. That does pass. Next is to approve payroll and vouchers. We've all had a chance to look over those and if unless there's any changes, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Treasurer Keeps.
Support.
Support by Trustee Showstack, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose.
May I have supervisor, I have correspondence for the clerk?
Yeah. You sure you don't want to do it yourself? Okay. Reluctantly handed.
So in my role as township clerk, I've been handed a letter from township treasurer. I've been asked to read, uh, a letter from Treasurer Keeps, um, with much regret, uh, to its contents. Uh, here I go. Dear Clerk Brooke, effective five thirty PM, August thirty first, two thousand and twenty three, I hereby resign from the position of Bloomfield Township Treasurer. I am grateful to have been entrusted by our community to serve the township in various appointed and elected positions. Thirty years, I have treasured all of them. Respectfully, Brian E. Keeps.
Did you want to do this thing? Are you sure? I know that'd be hard. Um, so with this.
I will file these in official records.
So with this, um, do you want to lay out our options of what to do going forward?
Well, the resignation of a township officer must be in writing, signed by the officer resigning, addressed to the township board and delivered and filed by the township clerk. There's no action required, um, to receive the, uh, written resignation. There's a couple of options though, with this resignation. Um, it sets a specific effective date of August thirty first, twenty twenty three at five thirty PM. First option is within thirty days prior to that effective date of the resignation, which would be August first. The township board may appoint to fill the vacancy at the date and time of the effective date. So up to, within thirty days of that effective date, you can appoint somebody that will take the position immediately on August thirty first at five thirty one PM. Um, if that is made, the resigning officer does not vote on that, uh, that replacement. Um, the next option would be after the effective date of the resignation, the township board may, again, appoint to fill the vacancy. Um, and there's no, um, requirements for the appointment. Uh, there's, there's different methods of doing it. It's really what, uh, the township board wants to agree to. The caveat, well, though, is that if you don't do one of those two, the third method is after forty five days after the effective date of the,
Special election.
Of the resignation, i- it's referred to the county and there's a special election that's scheduled. And importantly with that, the nominations for the special election are set by the, uh, county party committees for each political party in the county. Um, so with the appointments, um, you would have some say in who would be taking over the position of treasurer of the township. Uh, if you fail to act within the forty five day window following the effective date, you would lose that opportunity to, uh, have any input on that. It would be up to the county party committees, uh, to select the nominees, and that would be subjected to a, a special election. Um, there's no requirement for soliciting applications or, uh, for candidates to consider. You can do that. Like I said, there's no set method for making the appointments, whatever you can agree upon. And, uh, I'll, I'll cover that kind of, um.
So just to clarify, if we did a special election, people couldn't put their own name on the hat, they couldn't put their name on the ballot. It's the Oakl- Oakland County Democrat Party and Oakland County Republican Party, not us, not the community that chooses who would lead in our community.
But it's the county party committees for the, each political party in the county, so.
Oh, and the, right, right. But I mean, meaning it's, it's political parties at a county level would make decisions of who would be on this board at a local level.
Correct. In addition to the cost of the election.
Right, and we'd have to pay.
And this is something that happened historically to the township many years ago and almost destroyed the township and the board. So I would highly recommend we don't go down that road.
Yeah.
Um, I'll also send to, ha- have, that we have this presented to us, um, just, uh, we'll be in time for more discussion later about what Treasurer Keeps has provided to the township all his years of service and, um, but certainly has significantly improved our financial situation and helped us become such a strong financial municipality. With that said, my thought is, you know, based on the choices that council has provided to us.
I would add, one other thing that I forgot to mention is there's no need for the township board to take any action tonight. Um, this has just been presented, it complies with the statute, so.
And I understand, and I'm, I understand. I just want to, my thought is when it's time to make a, um, decision on a replacement, my thought is we already have somebody on the board who knows the township inside and out, is very strong in finances, uh, great deal of integrity, has been very much involved with, uh, the residents. He, and that person would be Michael Showstack, who I would highly recommend that we give a strong consideration to when it's time for us to make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just like to say I'm, you know, a little caught off guard with this and I certainly, um, echo trustee Barnett's sentiment and I think I, you know, made comments before to this board, but I really appreciate the composition of this board and the way that we've all been able to work together. And I completely support, um, trustee Barnett's suggestion, uh, for trustee Showstack because I have no doubt that he would, um, I mean, he's got big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that he'll be able to do a great job.
I really echo the same thoughts. Obviously, there's no reason why we would want to just let this go because once Brian has retired, we, we would have no treasurer, it just makes absolutely no sense to wait. And, um, you know, I second that, um, trustee Showstack has been with the township. He has the right background. Um, I would be very supportive of his position as treasurer.
Yes, one question is if, if we were to, let's say we were to lean towards that way in the future, is this something you would even consider?
Um, yeah, uh, you know, giving it, giving it some thought here and I appreciate everyone's sentiments. Um, uh, but I would, I would definitely be interested in if I'm honored to be chosen or selected for that position.
And so then I'd appoint another trustee, okay?
If, yeah, if he went up, then we would go through a similar process.
So, um.
In which case there'd probably be open solicitation.
I assume it would be the same process, there'd be a thirty or forty five day window.
I believe there's a distinction between a township officer and a trustee.
Yeah. Cross that bridge if we get to it.
We will have some time to look into that and we can fill you in on what that process would be.
Right.
Well, I wanted to add just a couple of thoughts and, you know, when thinking about filling this spot and it's a, it's a super important role in the township and, um, Brian has provided such an amazing amount of skill, ability and discretion and judgment um, that comes from someone who's been involved for thirty years in the township. And, and, and so, you know, in my own personal opinion, I'd be looking for someone who has that connection to the township, someone who's been serving the township, someone who has experience here on, on the board. Uh, which, which tells me, you know, if we were to open it up to applications, um, you know, my very first requirement would be they've got a connection, experience here at the township board level and understanding about, you know, what it is to, to be in this role. And nobody's gonna have that unless they're on the board. Um, so it's kind of a false choice to say, oh, let's open up to applications. But, you know, my number one cri, you know, one of my number one criteria is gonna be that the person is, um, has, has been in this position and experienced the township for, for many, many years. Doing an election sounds great, but it's already been pointed out that, that, that this is not really, you know, well, it's an election, it's not really democracy because people won't be able to raise their hand and, and, and decide for themselves to run for this position. It's, you know, they're all appointed by, by party apparatus, not a big fan of that, of that approach. And, um, you know, I think, you know, trustee Showstack has distinguished himself as a, you know, as a, as a great trustee and, and I would have, I'd be willing to support that idea as well if there, if that opportunity came up.
And, uh, Michael, you and I have grown up together on this board. I used to sit where trustee Pique is right now and, uh, um, I can honestly say that from the first budget we spent together at your house going line by line to now, um, you have, uh, you have definitely always impressed me with, with your ability to see all sides. Um, and Brian, when coming into this position, you have definitely been somebody that I've gone into your room, what do you think of this? What do you think of this? So, um, that is definitely gonna be missed. Uh, some of our witty banter as well as some of our other banters, but it has always been respected that no matter what, um, you were always an open door to me and that will be missed. So hopefully it's still an open phone. But, yeah, uh, when it comes to these three positions, I personally can't imagine doing this position or that one without having trustee knowledge because even with four years of a trustee, there was a lot to learn about the township itself. Not, people think, oh, it's just running a corporation, it's, but it's not, it's different, it's a community. Um, so you have six years in that. And to what you're saying is even if a CEO of some corporation came up, it's not the same as somebody who sat through and watched all of this happen.
And has all those, those background and experiences as well.
Right, and has the pedigree.
So.
Versus like a trustee position where I personally would think we would want to open up and have people apply. Um, I think it also would be false hope for me that I would ever find somebody.
Right.
That could take it as easily.
By the way, there's an empty seat here. Treasurer Keeps is not allowed to participate in this process, so just to make that very clear, he's in the audience instead of at the table.
To be clear, he can't vote.
But he also is one who doesn't like a lot of attention, so he probably didn't want to be up here for the accolades, but it'll come eventually.
Well, I think, I mean, what we're, the conversation was giving some guidance as to what, what we'll put as a agenda into the next meeting.
Yeah.
What the agenda topic will say at the next.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Well, please come back up for this next motion.
What a nice one.
So next is our last motion is for adjourned.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion by Clerk.
Support.
I might give Treasurer Keeps this one. On support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, that does pass. Thank you, everybody.